Okay, good evening, everyone. Today is March thirteenth. It is seven oh one AM and we will be kicking off the school committee meeting. As Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all persons and members anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. School committee members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mara Hogan?
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Alexis Fishbone?
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Brian Haas?
Yes.
Um, I don't, we don't have Chuck or yeah, the Chuck or Charles, they're not here today, correct? And they're in person? Okay, Wayne, I saw that you were remote. Let me just get you.
Thank you. I also can't turn on my video, but maybe that's okay, but I'm here.
Oh, I may have locked things down too tightly. Sorry. Sorry, I was, I'm, I'm the, I'm the Zoom police today. Um, I'll see if I can fix that in just a moment. Uh, but you can hear, okay? Yes. Think that Wayne said yes. Okay, um. I know, uh, do we have any other staff there, Brian, in person? Now, we have a lot of paras and Melissa, um, I know you and Nanda are, you can hear me, okay? Oh, I, I see thumbs up there. Wonderful. Anybody else? Brian, there is Mr. Um.
Kozic there.
Yes, Mr. Kozic. Great.
Thanks, dear.
All right.
Here.
Okay, so everyone can hear me. Great. Um, I'm looking to see if we have any student, our student representatives. If they are.
Online again.
Harper, yeah, let me see if I can, I'm Yu Yu Harper.
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Hi, okay, great. Good to have you. And I'll try to fix your video as well. This open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted as a hybrid meeting as allowed by Chapter Two of the Act of two thousand and twenty-three, signed into law by Governor Healy on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. This act continues to exempt certain provisions under open meeting law regarding remote meetings and public access until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. This committee is convening via Zoom and in person as posted on the district website. While, um, while an option for remote attendance, participation is being provided as a courtesy. The public, um, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast to remote attendees unless otherwise required by law. And so, um, in the event I become disconnected or something, Morrow, you'll step in as, um, chaired for the rest of the meeting. Um, okay. I nominate you. Um, please, please note that this meeting is being recorded accordingly. Beware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Uh, anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. If you plan to record or broadcast this meeting, please use the raise your hand function now to notify the chairs required by law. Okay, no hands. Um, along with the agenda, most of tonight's meeting materials are posted on the website. Under the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school committee agendas, public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents. Uh, the public comments agenda item is devoted time for school committee to hear from the public. As such, its structure primarily supports a unidirectional recording of public comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Here are the general ground rules for any public comments. Anyone wishing to make a comment during the virtual meeting may do so by, uh, submitting the comment through the link provided on the agenda. Please have your Zoom name match so that we may be able to unmute you to speak. All public comments are limited to three minutes to ensure that everyone who wishes to comment has the opportunity to be heard. No person may comment more than once without permission of the chair as time allows. A chair could consider allowing a person to comment a second time, especially if it's related to a topic that has not yet been brought up. Anyone wishing to submit written comments to be read by the chair may do so by emailing comments for SC meeting at maynard.k twelve dot MA dot US. Indicating public comment in the subject line, please include your first and last name and your town to ensure your comments are read. Comments will only be read for three minutes. If the submitted comments are longer, they'll be suspended at the three minute mark. To ensure all comments can be read in their entirety, it's suggested that you keep them to approximately three hundred and fifty words. However, suspended comment, um, submitted comments, um, um, longer than three hundred and fifty words will be included in their record in their entirety. Um, meaning ground rules, I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. I'll ask each member if they have any comments, questions, or motions they'd like to make. I'll go through the members' comments or questions if time allows. Please hold those speakers until your name is called and remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes, which will be taken, um, after this. If meeting, if members wish to engage with members, please do so through the chair to not interrupt others who are speaking. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting must be conducted via roll call since all members are not in person. Um, I'll go ahead and before we move on to the first time agenda, permit me to call the meeting to order at seven oh seven via roll call. Mary Branley?
Here.
Mara Hogan?
Here.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Alexis Fishbone?
Yes.
And Natasha Rivera, yes. Um, now we'll move on to the public comments. I don't, we think we had any, I don't, we didn't have any emailed comments and I don't believe we had any, um, submissions. I just will. We just checked to see. Just in case, if anyone had any public comment, uh, they submitted them and you're here. If you want to raise your hand just to confirm, because Colleen is out today and she, I just want to make sure we don't miss anyone who may have, um, submitted something elsewhere. Okay. I don't see anything there. So, um, any urgent business? Superintendent Haas?
Always urgent business, but it'll wait until the late times.
Okay, all right. Oh, and now we are going to move on to the student representative report and I am going to see. Sorry, I'm just trying to get you to, so, um, Harper, so I can get your video on.
Yeah.
Just one moment. All right, here we go. Oh, maybe I can't do it in this one. Um, if you want to just go ahead and start, you might just be ready for your video just to come on in some moment. Okay?
Okay. We've got a short report today. But the highlights are many students traveled to West Springfield to support the girls' basketball team in their final four game. It was an amazing game to finish an amazing season and we are all very proud. The Spring Musical, which was Dirty, Rotten, Scoundrels, was really wonderful and drew big crowds all weekend. And then a guest speaker named Jeff Des, who delivered a workshop today called Disrupting Success, was a really good hands-on experience and all the students really enjoyed it. Student Council represented Maynard at the state conference in Hyannis. And then for upcoming, we have March Madness next week and also spring sports starts next week. And that's it.
Okay, wonderful. That was pretty quick, but I know that everything's going on. I just, I think I may have on, I don't know if you want to check your video now that you're able to turn it on or not, but oh, yay. There we go. Um, thank you so much. I'm gonna just go around to see if any members have any questions, comments. Um, well, actually, before I do, I just wanted to, um, let you know, last, our last meeting, we had, um, Winston's came to us. And, um, they just were part of, you know, their annual and, um, um, visit to the school committee. And, um, you know, they had some great feedback that they had, you know, been working on, but I wanted to get a sense from you if, how the food, um, how that's been going in the past, you know, year since there's been a lot of conversation. It feels like it's kind of died down a little bit, um, but I didn't want to assume, um, unless I could just really confirm how that sense might be at the, at the high school now.
Yeah, I feel like, um, oh, I feel like I haven't heard many issues or necessarily complaints. Um, in the beginning of the year, we would have the same thing every single day. So that was, I heard a lot of people being like, we want to switch it up. And I feel like they've done a good job at starting to do that and incorporating new things into the menu.
Right. So it sounds like they've heard the feedback. They've been responsive.
Yeah.
You know, to that feedback, the options, they did explain to us that some, they've somehow laid some of the layouts of where the placement things have helped as well.
Yeah.
So, um, great. That's really great to hear. I just wanted to touch on that since you guys couldn't be at the last meeting. Um, so thanks for, for sharing that.
Yeah.
Um, Mary?
No, I'm all good. Thank you very much for taking the time.
Uh, Morrow?
I just had a question about the, um, the guest speaker. Was that for everybody or just certain classes?
It was for the eighth, ninth, and tenth graders.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So each grade had their, it was a separate or was it all together?
Um, all the, those three grades all met in the assembly and, or in the auditorium. And we all listened to him talk. And then after there was a workshop for just ninth and tenth graders.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Uh, Hillary?
Uh, no, thank you for coming, Harper.
Uh, Alexis?
No, thank you so much, Harper.
Wonderful. Well, Harper, thank you very much and happy almost spring.
Yes.
Um, so, um, if you could just, I know that this, the next couple of months are going to be really challenging for, for seniors or just all the grades, kind of a lot happening. We, you know, want to get a sense of, you know, if you're, if you guys are not able to come, um, you know, if, I know the last time you, you guys couldn't, I read your report, which was great. Um, but if there's a couple of days in advance, if we could kind of get like, hey, we might have some challenges, you know, these particular days, maybe you can discuss that at the Saks meeting. So we can, um, kind of, you know, pencil that in or if we should just be looking for a report or not. I want to make sure we have space for you all. Um, but we also had, um, Rep Hogan at our, one of our meetings and I, and I don't, I don't think that you guys were here for that one. I think it was the same meeting. And so, um, so I just want to kind of make sure that, you know, to consider if we have to report back on some things for you guys.
Yeah.
One of the things that did come up was about school funding. And so I know that you guys don't really have a major hand in that as part of the, the sack. But I think it's important to keep you all looped in on how we're really trying to advocate to our state representatives as much as possible. And certainly I want to make sure you guys have, um, space to also do that when we have them at our meetings. Okay? All right. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
You too.
Okay, Superintendent Haas, uh, Flores, your superintendent report?
Great, thanks. Glad to be here. Glad to have an audience. It's kind of fun. I think you should come and see every other week. Um, might be, it'd be fun. Um. Uh, let's see. So my report, um, Green Meadow Elementary School Building Project, we actually had our first big meeting today at Green Meadow in the cafeteria at about nine o'clock with representatives from the construction company, CTA, with representatives from the town. Um, the chief, fire chief was there, a police representative was there. Um, Justin DiMarco was there, Greg Johnson was there, the building commissioner, that means African people's names, but I remember roles. Um, our OPM team was there, Colliers, um, the designer team, MBG, they were there. Um, principal, assistant principal, so it's probably twenty, twenty-five people. It was a great kickoff meeting to just go through, um, lots of the nitty gritty of the building projects. You know, the pay, the quarries, the timing, permits, you name it. So it's great team, very excited. Um, there's an update on radon, which is we have been going round and round and met with a variety of people and learned a lot about radon. Um, it exists, that I knew. Um, so what are we currently doing? The most up-to-date plan, because the plan has changed, I'll be the first to admit. Somebody said from one of these companies said, hey, you should put the exhaust fans in the window that you used during COVID because they'll blow all the air out. I don't know. That sounds pretty good to me. And I, and other people, so I wasn't on island unto myself, said, that makes sense. Let's do that. Um, so we were about to do that and a couple of other people said, well, let's rethink that. I would be thinking that it sounded really good. Um, but we did rethink that. We didn't, we uninstalled one and we didn't install the others because they said, hey, you're just gonna have negative air pressure. You're gonna pull the air from under the slab from the rooms into the room. Okay, so how do we fix that? So we have to do three things, um, which we're doing over April break because as you know, and then we do work at Green Meadow. It's not a new building, so when something breaks, you do not go to Home Depot and get a replacement part. You have to order it and sometimes they actually have to build it. They have to make it. Um, but the UNIVs that aren't working specifically at this point in the kindergarten wing, all, there's four rooms that are in, um, the parts have been ordered. Couple of those parts, not surprisingly, were backordered, but they have already been ordered a while ago. So the plan is to have those UNIVs made operational the first two days of April break. Um, perhaps we'll be here, company's on board. The next thing we're gonna do, which, um, glad to say we're gonna do that, is balance the, so we don't have any notice, air conditioning in Green Meadow, but we do have ventilation system. So we have, you know, because we work in there, many of you, you have those big exhaust fans and the ceilings are under the coves. And those, along with the UNIVs, balance the airflow and the air circulation. So you don't have negative air pressure. So we have a different company coming two days after, or not two days, but the following two days to balance the exhaust fans in those rooms. And once, and at the same time, we're having, you know, a third company, they'll do different things. I guess UNIVs, one does HVAC, and the third company is putting in a radon mitigation system in the four rooms that are above for CPI slash L. Don't ask my best answer, but I've changed it a lot. Um, parts per liter within the air. So they'll put, so what that looks like is roughly some sort of type tube on the exterior of the room. So it won't disrupt what's going on in the classroom. It's outside. It'll go down, tap into the sub slab area and vent the air out. And that's specifically what we're waiting on with the leak because it's heavier and it would sink. Um, and then when those three things are completed, we'll run a forty-eight hour test to test the air yet again. And hopefully those three things will get those numbers below four. Also get back probably at the beginning of next week, our ninety-day test, because it runs consecutively for ninety days and most at the ninetieth day. I would be surprised if those numbers are low, just given that they haven't, truth be told, some rooms have gone down, some rooms have gone up, but we haven't ever got to the place where all the rooms are below four. So I wouldn't anticipate that. So that's why we're going forward with that, because we need that building to be safe and sound for another year plus. And should have a good update after April break with, uh, after the forty-eight hour test on radon air quality results. All right, um. Well, I wasn't gonna talk, Harper did a good job. She kind of stole my thunder there because I have to say, having gone out to Springfield, the girls, they should be proud of themselves. They played a tough game. The team they played was strong and fast. Um, they moved the ball well. Our girls played hard. They got to the final four, which is no easy task. And they played all the way. So good for them. Um, the play, I don't know how many people had the opportunity to see the play this weekend. Um, phenomenal. Really, really, that's a hard, that's hard. There are so many songs, so many lyrics, so much stage movement. And if I'm right, which I am, that somebody, one of the leads, I just can't remember the names of all characters, was performed Friday, got sick. So somebody, and if you can Kendall, right? Am I right on that? Yes, Kendall had to step in. And it's funny, she did a phenomenal job. That's not the funny part. She's playing this role, a wonderful queen in the play, I think. And she plays different roles, right? Because they're characters. Um, and she's a nurse and she's carrying this book like this. And I think it's part of, and I, for a while, I think this is part of the play. So she's like looking and doing what she's supposed to do. And then somebody smarter than me next to me says, you know, she has to read the script a little bit because she, I'm like, I did not know that. So she was a rock star and it went, and every now and again, because there were so many songs, it would get to that, and it's long, and you could tell. She was struggling on her word. Then the gentleman, who is not one of our students, an experienced, um, piano player, he would just belt it out and sing a couple of the words just to carry that song through. They were phenomenal. So I was very, very, very impressed with just, you know what, life happens and plan B and what do you do? And they didn't miss a beat. Um, what else is up and coming? So that was just super exciting. I hope many of you had the opportunity to see it. If not, highly recommend the fall play next year and the spring musical. That year as well. Um, the international dinner is coming on March twenty-seventh. If you haven't ever been to it, it's huge. It's crowded. There's a ton of good food. It's like the cheapest date you're gonna go on in a long time. If you go with somebody that you want to go with and make it a date, it's a ton of fun, supports the kids, highly recommend it. Um, International W E V M News Community Broadcast Week is March seventeenth to the twenty-first. They are just constantly in motion and doing great. The youth Fowler School, so that's high school, there's a lot going on at the high school, is a very busy place. For those of you that work there, you know that. Everybody else you live, many of you live in town and you know that. The Fowler School, about twenty kids went with Principal Kenny and Assistant Principal Snyder to the youth leadership conference, specifically seventh and eighth graders. Um, and I heard it was a fantastic experience. And actually, one of our seniors, um, went with them, which is kind of funny, Hannah Peters, who's a senior, went with them. And when she was here, you would have thought she might have been a teacher, very dressed up, very professional. She's also, just in case Harper didn't mention that, she is responsible for bringing the speaker today. Because she went to a leadership thing over the summer and said, hey, this is special. This is cool. I want to bring this to the high school. And as part of her project, she put that all together.
Wow.
She, so anyway, yay to her. And she's also never been since.
Well, no, she also, I think her, her brother is in eighth grade and he got to go, um, to Holden Peters. So I was, I've heard, I heard that worked out interestingly.
And she also, she also had to put together great applications to go to the Maynard Education Foundation and did a phenomenal job.
Good.
To get some money to do it. So, yeah, all around success.
Excellent. I am glad. And then Green Meadow is doing bingo for books, actually, I think it's tonight, which is why a lot of people are there participating in that. So what's my update for you? I'm glad to entertain questions or?
Yeah, I have, um, I have, uh, thank you very much. For one, also, thank you, Principal Ken. I know you're on, um, for all of that, um, the work that you've been doing as well. Um, I, Brian, I had a question about the, the radon, um, just to make sure, because this is one of the things that people, you know, want to kind of understand. And rightfully, none of us are really experts at it. So, um, based on the last, um, this major discussion we had at our school committee meeting, there was, there's a slight pivot in the recommendation, right? So that it was, it, as from the exhaust to now full head to not doing that exhaust process, but, um, installing the, or getting those fixed, the, the UNIVs. Um, it's out. So I just want to make sure everyone's clear on that piece because that is a little bit of a, um, a new recommendation based on different guidance, correct?
Um, so we're not doing the exhaust fans. That's correct. Fixing the UNIVs and balancing the exhaust fans within the building.
Okay, um, yep. And then the other question I had about that was, um, the testing will be after the forty-eight hours. Um, and when was that again? The, um?
Eight-hour test, so it's a two-day test. And that'll be when all three of those pieces are done. The UNIVs.
Three of them.
Balancing and the radon mitigation system in those four rooms.
Okay, and, um, last question on this, because I think this is where some of the concern came up last time was, um, because the, the spaces are elevated and there are still occupied. Um, for, you know, at different levels, the, the numbers are coming back. Um, has there been specific guidance that says the spaces should not be occupied during, at a certain level? Like, is there a number that EPA guidance or anything that says, you know, elevated and not? Because that's the part, I think, the concern that came from parents last time was that there were some of these efforts happening. But during these efforts, the, the numbers are still elevated. And so what is that? What is that trigger or decision process that would change that, um, that would change the directive of having the space occupied or not? Oh, sorry, I didn't, I don't know if I, if I missed.
Have to get back to it now. We haven't got any guidance. Companies were working that they needed to be unoccupied. And that's from all four companies.
Right. And that's what I wanted to make sure. Like, that's what they're, they are the professionals. Like, you have a couple of companies on it and none of them have said that the numbers project or that are coming back require the space to be unoccupied, um, at any point. If there's anything that you can, I don't know, if they, or even if they have any, um, guidance about that, that we could share publicly, that is probably the one outstanding question I think people have. Um, is, you know, with that. And I don't have the answer to it. And again, I imagine this is, you know, that area. Um, you know, this is not going to be a one-time deal. So, um, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, Mary, any?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Alexis?
I'm good for now.
Okay, Morrow?
Uh, Brian, yes. How long does it take for them to do that, that radon mitigation, like the, with this couple of days? So that's all going to be done during April vacation?
Yeah.
And then, so are you expecting the following week to have the, the radon test?
Yep. I mean, if they get it all done by Friday, I would think they can drop the test Friday. So it really just depends. Just wait a minute.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, usually just as a comment about the radon mitigation, um, most of the companies, which I've everyone that I know, um, they guarantee that the rate will be low because you've done the other things, the other prevented that if it doesn't, they, the radon company will actually do whatever additional for me. Yeah, just so that.
Good, thank you.
So let's get those warranties is what we're.
Hello, warranties again.
All the warranties. Hillary?
Um, when you ask, when you pop on Natasha's question about the threshold, can you make sure that they, like, consider a threshold for children as opposed to adults? Like, if they're different, um, like, ask if they have different thresholds? And then, um, possibly for, if you don't know right now, but for next meeting, can we get information about a plan for the playground at Green Meadow and the road that's being built? And, um, the playground that will be where the flagpole is? And, um, a couple of parents were asking about why not, why the playground couldn't be on Coe Park and different things like that. So can we get sort of a summary of that whole situation and planning and contingencies?
Absolutely.
Hillary, is that just, um, just so I want to make sure I'm understanding, is that you're getting some questions about the location of the planned playground? And we just wanted to have, like, from, like, why it was recommended, where it's going?
Um, basically, it's part of the update of Green Meadow, addressing the role in the playground and the location of the playground and the plans for the intermediary time period.
Oh, okay.
Where the kids are going and that, that whole logistics.
The interim, the interim, got it. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't hear that part. Okay, all right. Um, so I think we are now, um, moving on. Oh, my agenda just closed. Um, let me just make sure what's next. Okay, we have the Washington DC field trip. So I don't know if we have Mr. Kozic is available for that?
He is. He's standing up.
Wonderful. Kevin, good to see you.
Thank you.
Hello, Kevin Kozic. I'm the band director here in Maynard Public Schools. For those of you who don't know this, and I figured today I'd take you through some of the broad strokes of our Washington DC trip and answer any questions that you might have. Um, that sounds all right.
Yeah.
So this is a trip that the Maynard Jesus program has been participating in since the late nineties. For every four years or so, we did have a little hiccup during COVID. So we're, we had two years that we had to skip. So now we're six years from our last trip was, which was in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, the trip typically four days and three nights, and this year in collab- Here in collaboration with Suburban Tours Incorporated, their trip company, trip management company. General itinerary on day one, which is Saturday, April twenty sixth. That's the last Saturday of February, I'm sorry, April break. Uh, we'll travel to University of Pennsylvania and Philadelphia. Uh, via Deluxe Charter Coach and have some workshops with the university staff there. Where they'll work with our, uh, musicians, our band and our chorus and. Whichever group is not participating in that workshop will get guided tours of Penn Museum. Uh, we'll have dinner included, provided by Suburban Tours at a local restaurant, and then we'll travel to Sinesta Select Arlington Hotel via that same motor coach. And our students will stay in quad rooms or triple rooms and then we'll have an overnight security guard. Um, day two. Breakfast at the hotel, travel to the National Mall via those same motor coaches, maybe a White House photo opportunity on the way, depending on, uh, if the. Street is blocked off or not. Then time on the National Mall with photo opportunities and lunch. Time in the Smithsonian museums, dinner included once again. Uh, show that we'll be seeing at the Kennedy Center and then back to the hotel after a long day. Day three would be Monday. That's the first day back from break. So our students will be. Excused from school that day, but they'll, they will have had all of their work done before we leave. Or their teachers and we're going to check in with the teachers about that well in advance. Another breakfast at the hotel. Arlington National Cemetery guided tours. Uh, lunch at Union Station and then the big part of the trip is our performances, which will be. In front of the Lincoln Memorial or on the plaza by the Jefferson Memorial. The National Park Service doesn't let us know where. Exactly our performance is until about a month out. So we're still a couple of weeks from knowing exactly where we'll be, but it will be one of those two locations. Either on the steps of Lincoln or the, the plaza by the water, if you've ever been to the Jefferson Memorial. More photo opportunities and dinner provided by Suburban and then the illuminated night tour of the national monuments and then back to the hotel. Day four, we'll travel back to Philadelphia, but for more tourist attractions, uh, Redding Terminal Market, which is a great place to get lunch and then. The Liberty Bell and other historic sites as time allows, maybe the Rocky Steps for our. Cinema and boxing fans and then travel home to Maynard, probably back in town by seven thirty on Tuesday, the twenty ninth and back in school. On Wednesday. Uh, your next page in terms of financial information, we'll be using the music. Travel line up at the high school, which we normally use for buses to competitions and festivals every year, but we'll. Go to the festivals as we usually do on trip here because we're taking the trip and it's usually around the same time. And then, uh, from our music activities line, uh, one thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars for our secretary nurse. That's Amy Jameson from Fowler will be joining us. For on the student parent side, uh. The maximum cost, so that middle section of your financial information, maximum costs might be, uh, thirteen hundred, eight dollars and eighty five cents. But, uh, we're have plenty of fundraising. Going on and corporate sponsors have helped us out a lot. So without individual fundraising. Uh, based on Suburban's work. With, uh, finding. Um, cheaper means of travel and, uh, they, we got our. Workshops comped at the University of Pennsylvania. That number is going to be closer to about a thousand dollars, uh, when I last checked. And again, that's before individual and group fundraising. So one thousand dollars per student, but. Individual fundraising will bring that down and generous corporate sponsors, uh, in the area will bring that down. Financial assistance was requested and applied for by nine point two five percent of our student travelers and all the requests reviewed. By the Maynard High School Guidance Department was fully provided by our Play It Forward scholarships. And you'll see that in a line too. So Play It Forward is, uh. Families choose to give an extra twenty five dollars for the next trip's, uh, scholarship funds. So those were completely covered. And then, um. We have a lot of, uh, parents. I wouldn't say concerned, but questions about student health, security and safety, which obviously we're taking very seriously. On the back page there, our staff going on a trip is, uh, Core Director Mackenzie Fournier. Myself, Nurse Amy Jameson, and then all of our core read, uh, parent chaperones. And including, we'll have a suburban tours representative with us the whole time. Students will be with their, uh, chaperone groups and chaperones. At all times, except when they're sleeping in their hotel rooms. We have behavior contract signs and, uh, plans for students and guard and guardians. They, they know about our contingencies. Overnight security service suburban setup. So there's going to be. Security in the hotel lobby and then all of our rooms, chaperone and students will be on the same floor and we'll have a security guard overnight walking the floor, just in case. Uh, student rooms will be assigned by request. So students, uh, request certain. Peers that they'd like to room with. And then we try to work out, work it out. So everyone gets one or two or three student. Students, uh, that they request to room with. And then we consult with the Maynard High School Guidance Department, of course, counseling department, my apologies. And all of our health forms, uh, detailed medications and, uh, health. Information provided to Nurse Amy by guardians and by student physicians. A lot of paperwork to sign there and Amy's doing a great job working on that. The, uh, myself. Director Fournier and Amy will not be assigned to chaperone any groups while we're down, while we're, while we are down there. And that's mostly so that in case there's any individual or small groups of students who need support, they can come to us and. Spend some time or we can keep an eye on them. So we're kind of floaters. Uh, oh, and actually an additional chaperone as well. The nursing room in the hotel will act as triage and then we'll have much. Also have an optional infirmary room available if necessary for any students sick. And that's, that's just a. Uh, something that most tour companies have put in since COVID. It's a good idea to have a room in case someone gets sick. For communication between all of the adults and the tour company and the bus drivers and our students, we're using the band app. That's. More like a, a band of, like, not a musical bands, but named for a group of any type of people. Um, and we'll have an emergency phone number to Amy, the nurse setup, used for all communication. And then, obviously, uh. Washington's an interesting place right now. So the National Park Service is going to provide public event safety notifications to. All the people involved in the trip and, uh. Mrs. Fournier and I have a lot of colleagues down there who are setting us up with Facebook and Instagram. Groups and notifications, just in case there's any, um. Unscheduled public displays or, uh, large groups of people that. Had the potential to become an unstable large group of people. So we're gonna, so I stay really safe. Any questions?
Uh, thank you very much. I'm gonna, um, go around to everyone else. Um. Um, Alexis.
How many students are going?
Fifty-five.
Okay. So every student that wanted to go is able to.
Correct. Others have travel plans, April break, something like that, and choosing. And then those students who are not going, they'll, uh, still be a part of the trip in some ways. So we're going to record our workshops and we're going to record our performances. And then post-trip activities include listening back, doing some, talking about how we can get better, what we learned also. All that stuff. So they'll be involved in some way.
And the chaperones will be on the same floor? Is it one floor that you guys are taking on?
It is one floor. Um, I'm sorry, I don't have a visual, but it's basically, uh, chaperone room and the two rooms that they're responsible for, students are on either side of the chaperone room.
Okay.
Great. Um, any other ones, Alexis? I'm sorry.
Nope. No, no, no.
Okay. Mary?
Um, yeah, thank you for this, Kevin. It's the first time I've seen this much detail. It's really, it does a great job. We, um, is, are there any parts of this trip that haven't been in the past, like the first day, the chorus and band workshops, the university?
The, the Penn Museum, the grand new, usually we stop off at a university and it's just sort of taking tour of campus when we're not performing, but, um. Well, lecture education is great and. The. The other things that are new would be, uh, the buildings that are new from twenty nineteen. So I. We did not go to the African American Museum on the mall. Or the museum of the Native Indians, which are both fantastic if anyone hasn't been yet. They're wonderful. So excited to do those.
Um, and the kids are going to be chaperoning the whole time because I see the Smithsonian Museum, instance, you know, how do you keep? The kids all together with.
Yes, chaperone groups are going to be between seven and nine. So the entire. Correct. All fifty-four students will be in the same building all at the same time, but then chaperone groups can go see different exhibits as they, as they vote or.
The kids are going together with their. They die.
Yes.
Thank you.
Maro.
Um, this is all great. I, I. Second Mary, the, the, uh, details. Fantastic. Thank you. Um. I had a question and I don't know if there's, this is probably maybe not a question for you, uh, but for Brian is, um, with. Amy Jameson. Being gone from Fowler during those times, I'm assuming that we're, we're going to get a sob?
We have four nurses.
Oh, okay. So, so then.
One of them.
Thank you.
Hillary?
Um, I, I appreciate the info too. I still have a couple of questions. Um. Are most of the, so the, as far as financial aid goes, are any of the kids that are not going, not going because of the cost? Or were you able to cover all of the costs needed by any of the kids needing support?
We were able to cover all the costs. I. Did not hear of anyone, um, not going because of the cost. We could certainly survey, but. At least the, the six that I know who are not going have other family travel plans.
Okay.
And then we, we do still have a lot of funding in the, um, Pay It Forward program and the Maynard Music Association is great about supporting too. So I think. Even, even if we had to cover all the students who weren't going, we would be able to.
Okay. Um, so I'm, uh, most of the kids that are going, kids that you, um. Or the chorus director have worked with for several years. So you know well to know if they have concerns and stuff.
Yeah, for me, uh, I've seen all these students since they were in fourth grade at Fowler and, uh, Mackenzie is actually new this year. So she doesn't know them as well, but. Even there's a lot of crossover between band and chorus. So, uh, even the students she doesn't know, we've. Had in the music program for a long time.
Okay. Um. Is. Do you, are you worried about handling things if there is an issue, um, between having enough support to like. A child into the home or if the trip needs to end and you need to return early or? If there's various issues like it being that far away, is there flexibility to handle that?
Suburban, uh, tours is very supportive with how they can. Uh, get students home. We're going to be in constant, uh, well, not constant communication, but send a lot of notifications to families. And then, uh, we have contingencies in place for that too. So one thing I didn't mention is because we've done this trip so many times, uh. Everyone who's run the trip before has been very responsible and has left, uh, tips and tricks. And, uh, suggestions for how to run the trip. So. Not many worries. No, I think, uh. Like I said, the, I think the biggest thing with Suburban is that they're, uh. They have. Contingencies in place to, to get students where they need to be. So they've been great to work with and a lot of. A lot of community or communities surrounding us, uh, work with them too. I think. AB uses them for their New York and is, uh, DC trips and. Baldwin, I think, is a suburb, but yeah, so no worries.
They, they be on the bring all that.
Yeah.
And expected.
Yes. And that's, yeah, so we'll have, uh, the same buses for the entire trip. They're, they're just for us. So, and they'll. Be wherever we are at all times. It's like they're going to drop us off and, and. Go get lunch or anything. So they're the part of our tour.
So they could take you out if you need to get out. Um, what about accessibility for kids with special needs, like physical or emotional or behavioral? Um, how, how are you accommodating the different needs kids might have?
We're, we're in touch with the special ed department and. And. And notes from certain students from our, uh, special ed team chair. So there's plans in place to support our students. No, no students are on, uh. One-on-one support at all. So in the past, we've taken other members of our staff besides nursing to support, but we haven't, uh. We haven't seen a need for that from our special education team chair. As far as accessibility, um, everything's handicap accessible and like I said, uh, myself and Mrs. Fournier will be floaters. So we'll be able to. Uh, support those students who we know pretty well.
Alright. Thank you.
Sorry, Kevin. Um, I'm sorry if I, um, just some more clarification because I don't, I don't have to hand out. What were the dates again for the trip? I didn't have that from last time.
Saturday, April twenty-sixth. A morning departure and Tuesday, April twenty-ninth and evening return.
Okay, just for, because I want to make sure I have it right in the motion. So it'll be from April twenty-sixth through April twenty-ninth. Okay, got it. Thank you very much. And then, um. I, I just wanted to really extend. I know it was been several years and this trip has been, you know, able to come back. So thank you. To everyone involved. I know these overnight trips are not an easy feat to coordinate between. All the students and parents and logistics. So thank you very much for that, that work. Um, I do, I have a, just some small feedback. Um. I have a Nova student who recently went on a DC trip this year or last fall really, um, and. They, I don't know if, would, with the Holocaust museum on your schedule? For one of the, one of the, um, they just encountered some. Um, I, I don't know if it's just more because of what's happening in society, but they had like a fire alarm that was going off and the museum indicated it wasn't. You know, they had an uptick and so the, the kids had to evacuate and it was a little disruptive. So. I would just maybe, um, I'm glad to hear that you're not really, you're kind of be floating around. But it would be great to have like that contingency when you go into each location because. Um, you know, DC isn't for the faint of heart these days and, um, you know, if something were to happen or just like an alarm that disrupts where like. A location spot that everyone should, you know. Meet to, um, if they have to evacuate would be great. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments? All right. So I'm going to, uh, make a motion to approve the. Quadrennial Maynard High School Band and Chorus Overnight Trip to Washington DC from April twenty-sixth. Through, um, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Okay, was that Mary seconding?
No, Maro.
Maro, okay. Just want to make sure we got it for calling for later. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, um, roll call. Hillary?
Yes.
Maro?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yeah.
Natasha? Yes. So both unanimous. Mr. Kozik, thank you very much. Um, and have a, a great time and look forward to hearing about it when you get back.
Good. Well, thank you so much for your, your trips.
Now, you actually have been on. Been here.
Uh, just one DC trip and one DC trip. Yeah. So. Yeah. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, um, moving on to the next item on our agenda, we are welcoming our paraprofessionals to our committee. And I see, I know we have Melissa and Nada are both here. I don't know if either one of you. Oh, and everybody also, I can't see everybody there, but I heard it was a party earlier. And I'm sorry, I'm not there to celebrate with everyone, but thank you so much for, for joining us.
Two, five, Jeff.
Yeah, um.
Yeah.
Uh-oh, is Brian, um.
Yes.
You need help, Brian?
Please.
Or, not that I'd much more help, um, remotely, but I'll.
Awesome.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Ryan and I'm the president of the fifty-two member of Maynard Education Support Association. We represent paraprofessionals throughout the district. I'm here tonight with many paraprofessionals and teachers asking the Maynard School Committee to endorse the ESP Bill of Rights. The reason we are presenting this document on behalf of the Maynard Education Support Association. Is because we are committed to the belief that our paraprofessional contract should accurately reflect the work these paraprofessionals uh do. And their imperative contributions to our students and schools. NISA and the MEA have both endorsed the ESP Bill of Rights. Just to be clear, NISA represents the job titles on the screen, and while my focus tonight is on these roles specifically. The ESP Bill of Rights is applicable to all education support professionals, custodians to clerical staff and paraprofessionals. The work of our paraprof, the work our paraprofessionals do on a daily basis directly supports the Maynard Public School Strategic Plan. Some of our roles and responsibilities include assisting students on IEPs and five oh four plans with curriculum access. And accommodations and modifications that ensures their individual growth and success. Supporting students with the highest needs, using specialized curriculum delivery models and teaching and modeling self-regulation strategies. Certification in crisis response and de-escalation techniques. Assisting students with widely varying levels of EL comprehension. Additional support for students, allowing them to access resources like our WAVM program. Providing critical targeted support as our population of students with trauma histories and social and emotional needs have greatly increased. Directly assisting the teacher with entire classroom management. Curriculum preparation and supporting the student needs of our youngest learners. This also includes anything from toileting to behavior management for children who have not yet been identified or completed the IEP process. What isn't included in our official job descriptions, but we all acknowledge as the fine print. Wiping tears and noses, cheering on the smallest successes. Recognizing triggers, giving hugs, refereeing recess gains, advocating sometimes loudly. Sharing our snacks and being a safe person for any and all students in the district. We happily do these things every minute of the school day for our students. At first glance, it may not seem like these connect to the strategic plan, but in so many ways, they are the foundation. The Education Support Professionals or ESP Bill of Rights contains seven ideals that we believe all paraprofessionals should be afforded in their employment. For example, recognition as educators. Paraprofessionals have a critical impact in our schools and the district. We are a fundamental part of special education, supporting all students that require any additional assistance. And we have the insight to know what make, what will make improvements in our schools. We believe that ensuring our in-district training opportunities. Voices in decision-making and access to additional training outside of the school are appropriate to help with our most vulnerable students. This recognition ensures that we are an integral part of the strategic plan. Health and safety. Oftentimes, the students we work with come with unique needs. Ensuring the workplace is safe and free from any potential verbal or physical abuse is essential so that we can perform our demanding work. Having adequate supplies, fully-staffed programs, clear protocols and appropriate training to deal with these unique needs. Are critical to having successful, effective programs. Program success is paramount to ensuring appropriate SEL and tiered systems of support for students. Paid family and medical leave. Just as virtually any Massachusetts resident, paraprofessionals should be eligible for some type of paid family medical leave. Currently, paraprofessionals do not have these benefits because we work just shy of the hours to qualify. Even if we were to work enough hours, the leave would be unpaid. This can put individuals in a very precarious situation in the event they need to care for themselves or a close family member. It often comes down to a decision to continue working in the job we have or to stay home to care for our families. Additional access to these basic protections that all workers get for job security under these types of circumstances are important to ensuring. Paraprofessionals are afforded the same rights as other employees. Some type of paid family medical leave ensures that we understand and implement culturally proficiency. And provide tiered systems of support, not only for students, but for our staff and for the entire school community as well. And lastly, but by no means least, a living wage. The jobs we do are critical to the students we support and the district as a whole. We deserve to be able to focus on one job, which should be enough. And be appropriately compensated for the work we do and the experience we bring to the classrooms. A newly hired paraprofessional could currently start at seventeen fifty-eight an hour or just over twenty-two thousand dollars a year. The lack of a living wage has directly led to high paraprofessional turnover. As new paraprofessionals gain access and quickly leave for districts. A living wage. Additionally, the high turnover and difficulty hiring at our current pay scale has led to chronic understaffing. While the needs of our student population have grown and the demands placed on teachers have significantly increased. Over the last ten years, the average number of paraprofessionals the district has employed. Has decreased at its highest in seventy-one to now only fifty-four, a twenty-four percent decrease. We have many of the same struggles as you, mortgages, health insurance costs, which will increase by almost ten percent next year. Student loan debt, childcare cost, et cetera. Many of us who have stayed in this district have chosen to do so because we are members of this community. And we know of the real impact we are having on our students' lives. None of us should have to make the choice between our strong beliefs in the Maynard School District and the challenges of figuring out how to pay the bills. It was great seeing school committee members around Green Meadow this week. Uh, we would love to know how we can best support you. Um, and help you better understand what it's like on a daily basis in our schools. Again, we're here to ask if you agree with these statements, if you hold these as values, and if you believe the work of our paraprofessionals is crucial to our students and our district's success. Um, I urge you to show your support by offering your endorsement of the ESP Bill of Rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa, thank you so very much. Um. Yeah, I'm sorry. I know everyone was clapping, so I wanted to make sure that the applause was um, well, well deserved there. And I know that was. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Um, so thank you very much for this information. And before I move on to the, the rest of the school committee members. Um, I wanted to just ask a couple of questions. What is, what does it look like for this Bill of Rights? Like, what have you heard so far at the state level as far as? The support around the state and it um, like the, the viability of it. Being put to vote. Is there anything else besides us endorsing this that we'd be able to do?
I think that's a, a definite start. Um, a lot of paraprofessional unions have started to, well, have endorsed. Um, and then it's kind of trickled on to teachers' unions and now school committees. So um. Just the endorsement right now would be um, really helpful.
Thank you. Um, and then I also just, you said something that is very true, and I just think it's worthwhile. Just emphasizing um, over the years, just as a parent and a school committee member and um, on the Green Meadows Council and CPAC. Um, I know many of you um, have stayed around because of how much you care for our community. Um, it hasn't been because we've been able to provide the best wages um, compared to our peer communities and. I think that's not that we ever have not been trying to advocate more, you know, funding for the school. Um, and any, any opportunity that we, we could get. Um, but I just wanted to, you know, take the moment to extend my, you know, wholehearted appreciation for um. The work that our paraprofessionals do in the one, you know, folks that have stayed here, especially through COVID. And now um, really, you know, getting into their supporting the kids who have a lot more needs. Than um, we've seen, you know, in the past as well. So, so thank you very much. We keep fighting. We know as much as we can, um, you know, with, with the town. Um, as you know, one of the things later on in the agenda we'll be talking about is an override, um, you know, just because part of that. Is really um, us being able to pay a living wage to um, to our staff um, who rightly deserve it. So. Um, so thank you very much. I'm gonna just go around to other members. Um, and see if anyone, I'll start off with you, Hillary. Any questions or comments?
Um, that's why you, like, you really are the foundation of everything and I'm so appreciative for everybody's out my kid and all that. Being able to be safe at school and being able to disperse and. Have the experience that all the other kids gets to have. Um, I don't know how you do it. I read, you know, the, the list of things in IEPs and I think I can't do that for eight hours for my kid. I don't know how anybody else is. Um, like you really are amazing. Um, I. A, a big part to me is the um, paid family medical leaves. I don't understand why the original law exempted municipal employees. Um. Everybody deserves it and all the rationale behind, all the rationale that was used to pass it in the state. Applies to everybody. There, there's no reason at all to justify not including anybody. Um. One tiny, but just a little thick question that I'm just, I was surprised by is the part about the seven years to reach the top step. Because I'm in the union and I'm on the top step and I've been on the top step for eight years. And I wish there were more steps and I'm on step thirteen and I want more. Why is it a want to have only seven to get to the top?
That'd be absolutely true. Um, I think. In seven years, you're doing probably the, the job as good as you can possibly do it. And our goal is to keep. The, the path to the top short. And then in negotiations, typically we drop the bottom step and we add a step to the top. So therefore it's, because I know a district that has like twenty steps and it's really discouraging to see like, oh, it's probably been here twenty years to get to the top step. Uh, so we've chosen to have a shorter. Step and, and by dropping a step and adding a step to the top.
That makes a lot of sense.
The universe stagnates because we all know that we're gonna get a ten percent increase in health or. The, a cola. And then if you get a three percent cola, you're gonna get three percent on, because you're on the top step, you, you really are making less.
Yeah.
So that's kind of rationale on our part behind it. I don't know.
If, if that makes, knowing that, that piece about moving to the top. I didn't know that. Yes, that makes a lot of sense. Um. I. I'm a little bit confused about where this is falling in terms of an endorsement. Like, is it, um. What, what is the Bill of Rights logistically for the state mean? Um. Like, does it mean that, because it's not a law. Like, how does it? What weight does it hold statewide? Um.
You know, Senator.
Markey.
Markey. Yeah. Uh, it's, it was a big force behind in Washington, in Washington around all this. And um. We figure it's gonna get a discussion started. And if it starts here and if it starts elsewhere, it'll trickle down. Um, and I'm sure somebody. More knowledgeable than me can do a far better job, but you have to start somewhere. So this is our, like, our first community start.
Yeah.
Get it started. And if you will endorse it, we can publicize it, we can put it on Facebook and, and that'll hopefully just keep trickling through states. And grow.
You definitely deserve all of this and I feel really bad that we haven't provided that.
Well, we keep asking.
Um, I just wanted to just make, just from a. Uh, procedural, um, right now, the MSA is in negotiations with the school, so I just want to be very sensitive for both parties. On how much we're talking in a public meeting because those negotiations on some of those areas are still going on. So I just wanted to. I know we're all very excited and supported, but for everyone, I don't want it, anyone to feel like they're in a position to talk about something that. Hasn't been really um, codified in a, in a final agreement yet. So just to kind of, you know, me putting my cautious hat on for everybody. Um, but I think all, we all can say, um, you know. Like the state has increased the minimum wage, you know, over the course of the year. So sometimes the, that's where the goal posts keep also. Moving as well. So I think it's important to have these conversations. Um, Mauro?
Um, I also wanted to congratulate all. All done a really amazing job. You know, but it's. And just. Some of my experience um, with dealing with kids that have issues um, with learning and um. I honestly, I don't know how to guess to it, but it's, you know, it's well appreciated. Um, I did. I. And I don't know if this is kind of stepping into those bounds, Natasha, but I wa- was wondering like what this. Does to. The, our tops. And I don't know if.
Are you asking Natasha?
Yeah, I'll, I'll answer my, my, my perspective on this because this is something that we, I think it's a state, it's a state legislation. A bill that's underhappened at the state level. So um, I think the endorsement. At this point would be that we are endorsing state action. For some of these areas, not that the school committee would be making a unilateral decision. On any type of topic. I think that's how it's been presented to us at this point is to support the state really. Um, addressing, you know, all of the, these positions at the recognizing for what they do. Um. And how we, you know, we can support that effort. And I think truly that might arm us. Um, with going to the town to be like, you know, we look, hey, we need to meet these state requirements if there's funding. Right now, we don't, we don't have that ammunition, I think, to, to do that. But if there are state requirements that need to be met. That certainly, I think, arms us a little bit more with trying to advocate for, you know, whatever some of these things are. Um, when it comes to just like the, the wages and the steps, I think that's the area I would, I would get a little bit less. Um, detailed discussion about right now because I think those are the areas that we do fall under, like school committee and, you know, purview with the um. With the paraprofessionals union. And um, I think any other time of year, we probably would have a deeper conversation, but I, that's the area that I want us to maybe. Just, you know, protect um, just for the integrity of the negotiations that are still underway. Um, so I, I think if it's more of endorsing the, the action of state, state action with a legislative. Um, and Melissa, please correct me if I'm, my understanding is, is maybe off or if you had any more to add on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's more about like endorsing the belief. That. You know, like any other employee, we. These are things we deserve and we'll work together to get there. It's not gonna happen overnight, but we're working together. We're on the same side to. To achieve these goals.
I think a thousand percent. I think um, you know, notwithstanding, you know, anything that's happening with this agreement that's, you know, under negotiation. I think whatever has been in the school committee's power over the prior two agreements to kind of bring up. You know, as much as we can to beyond minimum has tried, you know, is. Felt somewhat possible. I think it makes it harder when we're only getting like two and a half percent from the town. So it really tightens how much we can provide relief. And it also, again, what I mentioned earlier, it's been. Almost a little countered because the state also has been raising their minimum wage, right? So. Then the, the goalposts kind of move a little bit more at both ends, right? You're getting less funding from our town to, of how we can. You know, approach. And then also, you know, what we have to really um, pay minimally is also moving as well. So. I look to um, I think our paraprofessionals who are our community members to really advocate. Um, as much as we can in our community and your personal lives about the override. Um, because the substantial effort of that is to allow the schools. Um, really to meet our living wage for our staff. That is not um, really unreasonable. You know, it's. Definitely over three percent that we, you know, our, our contracts are, are, you know, average and that goes to pre-COVID. Areas, but even, you know, a little bit more to bring up, but it's still with two and a half percent, we'll just never cut it. So I think that's where I would look to. Our action and how we can, you know, support that effort of um, living wage um, is doing what we can on that front as well in our town. I don't know, Mary, if you have any thoughts on that as well?
Um, again, guys, I serve the backbone. Say it as often as I can. Stay, you know, who. You handle delicately and lovingly the students that have the most needs. Doesn't go unnoticed, you know, should pay a million dollars. You deserve it, but. Um, and I would love, love, love to have some of you come with us in front of the select board when they. Are talking about, you know, how we don't really need this money or it's not the right time or, you know, that kind of.
Compromise. That's the other word that gets thrown around is how we have to, the school has to compromise. I'm like. How do you compromise a person? They either are. how do you compromise a person? They either are employed and or they're not, like that's, what do you compromise there?
And we, so we are, you know, obviously dealing with the board and trying to get our our percentage, you know, like we were saying, if we could get three and a half percent every year, Brian says we'd be in a good place, a good solid place. We had, um, Kate Hogan, he had a last meeting and we were talking to her about what can, you know, what can she do to help us at the state level. And so we're all working together to keep hope, everything, which is important to your kids.
Alexis?
Um, thank you for coming. Um, my kids have been in with many of they, you don't support them one-on-one, however, you're in their classes and you do support them. Uh, and they love you guys. Uh, so I thank you. Uh, I did have a question, though. This is now, you said it's sort of filtering down into this different school committees throughout the state. Just out of curiosity, how many school committees have approved it so far?
One.
That's it? How many has it been presented to?
I don't have those numbers. Not many.
Can you, can you share Melissa, which one? Who, who was that? And is it just because this is the first, like you, it's just starting to roll?
I mean, it's like the second wave, right? So like we endorsed it in the fall and then we reached out to the teachers recently. And so it's once the, the union endorses it, it's like, it's stagnant unless you take the next steps. And so this was sort of our next step.
That was really the only question I had. I was, I was curious.
Um, Melissa, I, I just, is there anything else? Just hearing the questions that you wanted, you or any of the other members, um, just wanted to share with the school committee? Based on the questions you've heard. I just wanna make sure everyone has the opportunity to feel like they.
I think we're good. I mean, the question that I posed to all of you, you know, how can we best support you in really showing you what it's like on a daily basis, right? What it's, what it's like in our buildings? Constantly having to pivot every second of every day, right? So how do we, how do we help you see what it's like in our buildings, you know?
Um, yeah, no, that's a really good, I, I, I didn't have a chance to.
Other boards that we go collectively.
No, I was just saying, I didn't have a chance to go this week with the site visit, but I, I, I know that that is something that I think would be important for the school committee to, to do, uh, periodically on different areas, you know, just to get more into certain areas of the school, just to get, we talk about it, but just getting some eyes on whether that be different programming. Uh, I think that, you know, this recent, this week was at the Green Meadow. Um, so I think that's one area. Um, I would also be open to suggestions, you know, from, from you or board members. If there's a, a place that you would like, you know, a little bit more focus or attention to, or just some, you know, discussion around, um, you know, please, you know, email, uh, as well. I, I, I think that, um, open communication is, is really a key to a lot of this. I think personally, like, and every member, we'd all, you know, open our purses to you guys, um, with, you know, as much. I think it's just harder because realistically, um, you know, we're, we're denied a lot and it's really tough to see how dedicated people still continue on doing really tough job for the minimum wage that you do. So thank you very much for everyone for all you do. Um, oh, Hillary, did you have one more question?
Oh, yeah. I wonder if you would want to do the same presentation to the select board?
Sure.
Um, or potentially even, I don't think, I think that it could work for the spring, but, um, like a citizen's petition to present to town meeting for the town to vote to endorse it.
Sure.
Um, and do the same presentation to the
Yeah.
others.
If you wanna keep the line of communication open in regards to different, uh, meetings that you're having with the town or, you know, I know you guys were at the sanctuary, right? So if you wanted to reach out to us and then we can see what we can get for volunteers to, to come out and help.
Great. So, um, just from a procedural perspective, Melissa, I, I was just thinking of just making a motion that we would um, endorse on behalf of the Maynard School Committee, the, the Bill of Rights. Does that sound right? And then, okay. I just wanna make sure that that's really what you're looking to do, um, that will, for, as a takeaway to help you in, um, in this effort. Okay.
Thank you.
Great. So, um, I make a motion that the Maynard School Committee um, endorse the ESP Bill of Rights for the Maynard Education Support Association, um, in any state effort to seek approval.
Second.
Any further questions or discussions? Okay, uh, roll call, Hillary?
Yeah, definitely, yes.
Mauro?
Yes.
Mary?
Absolutely, yes.
Alexis?
Yep.
Yes, so you have our endorsement. Um, do you need something like more formal? Um, aside from that, or is there like a, a template letter? You do have a letter? Okay. I just actually probably should have thought about that. So, um, you know, maybe we'll make a mo- is, is it, is it, you have a hard copy now? Cause maybe Mauro can sign it if you want something.
Us to create a letter.
Oh, you want us to create a letter? Sure. Yeah, we can do that. If you have a template one that maybe worked for something else or one you can send over, we can, you know, kind of see what, you know, um, so I'm not reinventing the wheel, but happy to just send that to me, Melissa, and I'll, um, and if that's okay with the school committee, just, um, okay, I'll go ahead and submit it on behalf of the school committee. I'll work with you, Melissa, to get that done. Very much. And then thank you all for coming out. Is that Carol? Did I see Carol there? I'm so not used to seeing her on all TV. I know she's in person. I missed it. All right. Um, so the next item on the agenda um, is, is Wayne. It looks like we have you up for the, the Q two school financial report to the committee. Um, and did you, I guess, uh, do we need a, um, Brian, are you able to share that or should I, um? I can try to share it like I did before with the, I couldn't see if you were doing anything. All right. I don't think we need to share it. It's actually quite, quite long, so probably don't need to share the whole thing. So Wayne, the, the floor is, is yours. If you're, are you, um, can you hear?
Eric, he's not, Wayne, you're unmuted. Yeah.
Uh-oh, oh, no.
Okay, there we go. I think you unmuted me. My desk lamp just went out on me, so I apologize for the poor lighting. But I think, um, is the report up or no?
Um, it's, yeah, I think so.
Okay, I can't see it, so.
That's okay.
I don't know if the committee had a chance to read it. Um, so let me ask this. Do you want me to entertain questions or do you want me to go through? If you've gone through and read it, I don't wanna put people to sleep.
No, if you could, if you can kind of give like just the highlights, I see there's red. So I think let's focus on some of those. Maybe the, the key points. That you wanna really, um, you think are important to point out, um, beyond just the, yeah, the day-to-day stuff. That would be helpful, Wayne.
Yeah. Well, red on this report doesn't really mean a lot. The, the main difference is um, where we are in regards to the budget regarding the town allocated budget and the school committee allocated budget. Um, as you know, as the school committee, um, you allocated more money for us to spend than the, the town. So if you look at the town budget, you know, it may show a deficit and versus the school committee, uh, budget, uh, which shows that we're doing fine, that we are under budget. That's not going to be an issue. If I, if I'm allowed to cheat and, and, and come into present day, I can tell you that uh, we are now under the, the, the town budget, um, in real time. Um, as we know, we had expected that I would use revolver, uh, funds to offset uh, that deficit. Um, and so, uh, I would urge that people don't focus too much that we're on a deficit in relation to the town budget because we talked about that when we put this budget in place. If I could, um, uh, on my report on page three, I talk a little bit about circuit breaker. And I talked about you, this is year-to-date expenditures that, um, uh, we've spent out of circuit breaker. You know, tuitions, um, is the good part of that, both private separate day and re- residential. I also may add that we also pay tuitions out of one of our grants. Uh, if I'm not mistaken from memory, it's a two-six-two, uh, um, so that helps the operating budget that we can, um, put some of those expenses in there. On page four of my report, I talk, I get, I, I think graphs or pie charts are easy to understand than spreadsheets and numbers. Hopefully you feel the same way. I think pictures. Um, and so on page four, I show you uh, kind of where, um, in terms of facilities and maintenance out of the operating budget where the money has gone. You see utilities takes up a big part of that and other things are, um, plant maintenance, which i- is the building as a quote, plant versus grounds and, uh, supplies to keep things, uh, cleaned. Um, and then I talk about expenditures from the facilities rental revolving account. Again, uh, supplies and other types of custodial things. Um, on page five of the report, I talk about, or I showed a chart showing the school choice expenditures. And, um, a good bit of that is, is work, custodial work that F M S constr- uh, contracted services is, um, that is all, uh, maintenance types of stuff of us hiring people to do and fix things at the Fowler Middle School. Uh, as you're all aware, Fowler is in that sweet spot where it is about twenty-two, twenty-three years old, I believe. Um, if you put this in terms of a car, you know, this is when you'd have to start replacing rotors and major systems and it starts to cost you. And so we're spending a lot of money on, uh, keeping the maintenance up at, at the Fowler School. And let's see what else. I'd like to switch, uh, to, if you go like to page six, to, to school lunch. Um, first of all, our school lunch account is healthy. Um, not every district can say that. When I talk, uh, to my colleagues, that is often an issue. They're running, uh, a deficit in their, their school lunch. Um, but certainly universal free meals has really helped that a lot. Uh, we saw that when we went pre-COVID to COVID, uh, you know, when things were free and, you know, the participation skyrocketed and it's great that the Commonwealth has voted to continue that regardless of what the federal government does. However, we don't know what the future may have for the current administration in Washington. But on page six, I talk about where the money comes from, uh, to run the program. Um, just to remind everybody, there are no operating budget funds. There are no school committee funds. There are no town allocated funds that go to operate the school lunch program. It is completely self-sufficient. Majority of those, uh, revenues come from federal reimbursement. Um, and considering what's going on, uh, you know, that that's at least on my radar and I'm gonna imagine probably on some of yours. Um, the state, believe it or not, is a very small compared to what the federal government gives us. And then the money we take in from the students that do pay. And then the expenditures, uh, on page seven are, um, for school lunch. Uh, as you would expect, since we have Witsen's that runs everything for us, majority of our funds, um, that come in goes back out to pay Witsen's to run our program. Um, and also I show there in gold, uh, we do spend some money in terms of maintaining our equipment. Uh, pulling maintenance, for example, I'm sure as you know, we have to have like grease traps clean once a quarter and exhaust vents and those types of things. And so that's what that money gets spent on. The next slide it show is operating days. Um, as you would expect in August, there weren't many. Um, in December, that number gets pretty small because we have fewer days. Um, tha- that's important because obviously that affects revenue. Um, on page eight of the report, I would just like to highlight the numbers of meals served year-to-date. Um, if I remember correctly, at the end of the year for last year, we had served over a hundred and eighty thousand meals and we're a very small district. Uh, and I keep talking about the numbers of meals served for two reasons. One, um, it's pretty healthy. It's gone up. It's enough that it, um, in the five years I've been here, we have a healthy, um, food service account. But I also think that that goes to and says a lot about the good job that our food service company does and that, um, a lot of our students participate in the program um, as evidenced by the numbers of lunches that, uh, were served. Um, for those of you that, uh, weren't here at the last meeting, um, y- you know, Brian and I had the privilege of, uh, serving lunch in the Fowler Cafeteria. And, um, I'm not sure who enjoyed that more, if that was us or the students. Um, but it was a good time and, um, uh, I knew already, but you know, you got to see firsthand what, what good meals the students, uh, get. You know, we had a guest chef and everything and then, uh, uh, Caesar, that was the second or third time that I had seen him, that he had been in Fowler. And I know he spent time at the high school too. So they try and do things um, to, to keep the kids engaged. Most recently, uh, at the high school, and I think they might have done it at Fowler also. They allowed the students to vote and give some input into what, uh, they wanted the menu to look like. Uh, so getting back to my report on page eight, I show you, um, our revenue versus our expenses. Uh, while we are able to sustain ourselves, uh, as you can see, it's, it's, it's close. You know, pretty much what comes in goes back out, you know, which is fine. Um, as long as you have enough money to, to, to maintain the program and maintain the equipment and do what needs to be done. Um, overall, I would tell you that the financial health of the district as of Q two is stable. I don't have any concerns at this stage. And as I said, the anticipate, the deficit that at this time that was running, uh, in relation to the town budget um, would go away. Once I make some journal adjustments and, and apply more circuit breaker of which if I come to, if I cheat and come to present time, I would tell you that's already happened. Um, and I expect as we have in past years that we will finish uh, the year either at or under budget. Um, and the, um, attachments that I've had to the, to, uh, to my report is, as, as I've done in every report is what I call the condensed operating budget by our cost centers, which are the D O E codes, one thousand, two thousand, three thousand. By our cost centers, which are the D O E codes, one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, and nine thousand. So that you can see those expenses broke out and in the report. There's a legend, it tells you in general what are in those accounts. And then I also include obviously a. Copy of the detailed operating budget in case you really wanted to see what's in what one thousands, what's in the two thousands, pretty much. Instructional is what's uh all the two thousands, and that's usually the lion's share of any of your budgets, if you don't count the sped tuitions. I include. A table in there of to show you our revolving accounts, uh our major revolving accounts and um. You know, circuit breaker, as you know, is what I use to offset uh some special education expenses. Um the lunch revolving account, I think it's obvious. Preschool revolving, um I've moved some of the salaries from the operating budget, preschool salary from operating budget into that account. To um to ease some of the uh the burden on the operating budget. Um school fa- uh facility rental, a lot of our maintenance um. Repairs and those things, once we kind of tap out the operating budget, go into that account. Um and transportation revolving is what. Colleen uses to deposit the fees that come in and also to pay out the uh invoices to de-bus. Excuse me, and the last table that I include um is a table on the grants. Um you've seen this before, uh you know, that first column tells you. What what the grant is in terms of its title. And uh we usually refer to grants by their fund code, which is that second column. Cause every grant then has a unique fund code. And I have then what the uh what the budget allocation is, how much we spent, how much we have remaining. Uh kind of its status or when it's due. And who are is the person or persons that's kind of responsible uh for those or grants. And that's kind of a quick run through, and I would like to ask, are there any questions?
I am go- excuse me. I wanna make sure I understood the going, kind of going back to the beginning, um where you were talking about um. Well, first, before I get there, um utilities. Um have we had relief that I miss about um solar? Have we done like a comparison like halfway through the year? With um now that we have solar on, um just looking at the first six months of. Um like with the high school, is there any type of noticeable? Change with with those expenses or is it negligible? I would just maybe see if you could look into that for us, um as we're thinking about. You know, the benefits, the impact of, I know a lot of people were were certainly looking forward to that. Sorry, and um just to. Clarify on the part about the the deficit. Um so really, what that represents, that number is really the amount. If we were purely funded by only the town allocated budget. That's how much we would be, was it negative five hundred thousand plus at this point? But because we are, we've leaned into or we've needed to lean into our revolvers, that's where we're able to. Continue to offset and not not go into the red at this point. Correct?
That's correct.
Has Winston's raised any, I know there's any concern, I know they were talking about a new program with grant funding. About local food and I, you know, recently, I I think there's been some USDA changes or. Funding changes for grants, has there been any indication that there the program that they were gonna be seeking an application for? Is one of those that had um had is now unfunded so that. I just was thinking about, when you talk about food and the impact, we're really excited at our last meeting about. Exploring that and um I think since that last meeting. Uh if you haven't heard anything, it'd be great to hear feedback if we could get an update about. Um where that still stands, if they are still able to pursue that. Grant funding for local farms, or if that was truly one of the. Things on the chopping block that is now unfunded.
Well, two things, we applied for a grant, it wasn't for local uh. Food, it was uh for.
It was a it was a school, I think Winston's was directly, they had put in an application, I think they mentioned. Yes, yes, sorry.
Now, well, they 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 don't put anything directly, they do it through us, we do it, they can't put in for. Um but that was, yeah, they I they worked with me. To put that in, so essence, it goes in under us. It it has to be a s- a district, it can't be a food service company. Uh we didn't get that grant. Uh that was for equipment. Now, to your point of local food um fruits and vegetables. That was a a subsidy from the feds to encourage you to buy local produce. We got notification this week that that was done. That that was Washington and cut off the funding for that. That was not even to the end of the year to June thirty, that was effective immediately. Um, excuse me, so.
Okay, I thought it was, I just was wanting to confirm, that was what I thought. Sorry, I didn't know if you had any more out to that, I just wanted to clarify that that's what we had heard la- at our last meeting. It sounds like we're not able, we're not gonna be able to explore that.
Yeah, so that that funding has been stopped, what that means is we can still get fruits and vegetables, but. And I'm making this up, you you still can buy it from like bird's eye, you know what I'm saying, as opposed to getting. Uh fresh stuff, not frozen from local growers. Um so it's not like uh the students won't have access to anything.
I um, the other question I had was about the circuit breaker. I know that, I just wanna make sure we're we're good with that two-year look back. And what that number is that we have to expense. So that we don't lose it.
Yep, I've already spent that, yep.
Oh, good, so we're we're good with that, so that 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 requirement of that funds has already been spent, okay.
Yeah, that was part of the change that um I told you I would put in the place so that that doesn't happen, so. What I do is I as much possible spend money out of that first. So I've already expensed that one point three million, so we're good already.
Great, thank you, um I'll go ahead and um go on Alexis, I'm gonna start with you.
Rod, to the questions Natasha asked, what about the solar project, whether or not utilities has gone down at the high school because of that? Because for the New Green Meadows School, we're putting in the geothermal wells and looking at a solar project, so I was just curious about that. Uh and then, I know we just talked about the USDA and them cutting off funds, and I'm sure they'll, that will be added to the list of litigation. But the governor was quite incensed by it, like many other things. Um and has there been anything from the governor's office? To the schools about the potential for them to appropriate the money? Uh because they will appropriate again for certain things for this current year. Where they can fill in that gap, have we, have they mentioned anything at all?
No, they have not, and from what I understand, um you know, that's a pretty big number. And I'm not sure with the Commonwealth's budget, from what I've seen, that. That 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 will be a possibility, but the short answer is no, I have not heard anything.
Because there are other things they have to backfill, like for higher ed, there's a lot, they've got a backfill for us, so. They'll go in and appropriate more funds, that's why I was curious, we hadn't heard anything. Uh and then my other question is, you mentioned there was one line in there, and I wasn't here for this last year, so I'm gonna ask. Uh there's one line in there about the budget freeze during for March that you're gonna implement a budget freeze. How long does that budget freeze last?
To the end of the year. Just so you understand, when I say a budget freeze, what that means pretty much is what I call discretionary spending. So in other words, it doesn't affect the operation of the district, you know, if you need to buy.
If a teacher needs something, then they can still buy it, that's not going to affect. What staff can actually purchase for classrooms or administration can work.
Now, it does not, uh uh you know, uh when I send out the letter. One of the things I stress is that, you know, the budget freeze is not intended to impede the operation of the district. That's why Brian pays me, he pays me is to enhance the operation of the district, not to hinder it. And so that is not the purpose, but kind of the discretionary things, you know, you wanna. Buy, you know, I don't know, uh an extra poster or something or whatever, whatever, you know, we we. We discourage that and and if you, and they're pretty much then if they wanna do that, then they have to come and make a case. Why they wanna do that, um because, you know, I. Be quite trying to get the budget where it needs to be at the end of the year, like landing an airplane in order to hit the runway. You know, I kind of have to know where I am. And so what that also does is I also mention to people about their encumbrances. And I say. Yeah, I need you to review your encumbrances, number one, to make sure they're accurate. Cause a person may put in an encumbrance for ten thousand dollars for something, and it actually only costs seventy-five hundred dollars. So there's a twenty-five hundred dollar difference there that I say I could take back. And I can use that somewhere else to help balance out the budget. I also say. You know, by the time March comes right, you shouldn't be buying a whole lot of stuff, you know, you if you don't have it by now, you probably don't need it. And so I tell them to take a good hard look at those encumbrances, and at some point. I say, I'm gonna cancel all of them, so and that and that's excluding uh special education. So, you know, again, if you don't tell me that I need this particular encumbrance here, whatever, cause what that does, like right now. We have probably ten million dollars in encumbrances sitting out there. And so, let's just say that half of that is is salary, so there's five million dollars of money that's tied up. That might not need to be done, so when they release that, all of a sudden, I have five million dollars back into the budget. And I, so I need to know that in order to balance the books at the end of the year, so that's kind of the process for my thinking of why I do what I do.
Thank you so much. Yeah, that makes perfect sense, I just. My first go around, so I didn't know.
No problem.
Mary?
Yeah, I'm just um, the preschool piece, Wayne, it said. Um the the hope is that um that no preschool student for um fails to be able to. To come to school because of the finances, how are we reaching out to preschool families? Cause we all know that if we get these kids in early, in the ones that usually can't afford it, are the ones that need it the most, um we can get them on a good trajectory. So what do we do to outreach?
Well, that's, the actually, the program belongs to the 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 elementary school or the preschool principal. Um so I don't really get involved in it, other than I say, uh I think she, I've asked her to include. In the paper that she sends out, that if they have trouble. Uh making the payments to reach out to the business office. And for example, I had a family reach out to my office and. They um, I think had two children. One was on an I E P and one wasn't, so they were only, oh no, I know what it was, the one student. Was half a day on the I E P and a half a day not. So they were paying half of the tuition and. They asked for some relief uh because of their situation. And so I sent word back, I asked them, what could they afford to pay? And I eh will accept pretty much whatever they say they can afford to pay.
Yes, my concern is um. Parents that don't even go that next step because they they can't afford it, so we're just gonna not. Not even pursue it, so I guess.
Again, I think, I think there was some language, you know how the language we have with the student activities? Um fees, and we said there was some language that, you know, we didn't want to.
Excuse me, I know myself, just being at the food pantry, that I know that there are parents I've heard from. Who don't even ask the question because we just can't afford it. Um so that's, those are the people, you know, wanna be able to reach out and say, yeah, there is a solution.
I think when you Google the preschool and you go to the website and you look at it and says nine thousand, and you think I can't afford that, that you are theirs. And I think maybe like talking to the early intervention folks. And you know, the police department and their social worker who might know families that like the kid really needs to be in a better place during the day. Like they may be able to be targeted.
On the website, too?
I mean, I think there's a risk with like with that, that you know, everybody's gonna wanna, but. There could be, you know, in a target, like the food pantry, and people who have that, like those. The kids that would qualify as high need that costs a lot of money throughout their schooling, that we know are. Costs less if we give them a little intervention, right?
And it might be a case of just having a virtual available. The Boys and Girls Club, you know, that kind of thing, just uh uh make people feel that we're.
I wonder if um if we could um part of the preschool. Could we create like a scholarship, like a school committee scholarship? Or something to that effect that allocates like some of that money. That goes towards, and that could be maybe on that link, like where people, like if people wanna submit for a scholarship, so they don't, you know, it's just part of the whole. It was highlighted there as an, you know what I mean, as an opportunity for financially, so like they're not having to. You know, ask for it, it's just like their access to it is, and also I think it would be more equitable, my, you know, my concern is that. You know, um people who are asking, you know, are are getting that opportunity, but it's not an equitable approach, I think, to to be able to do that. Um and I and I I know that, I see Heather, Heather's on, Heather Newman, um I I only wanted. Took hi uh hi, um I don't know if this is something maybe that the Megan. Might also be helpful, cause I know she's kind of that. Bridge where knows families who are um, you know, might be more in need around our community. And if we have some, um I I'm sorry, she Heather probably can explain, I know, can you, oh okay, got it. Um she's kind of a liaison with the counselor, she works with, and I'm sure I'm not gonna exactly clarify her position, but it's it's part of our contract service, we have. Um like a a rap, a prize wraparound, and she helps supports families, communities or families cer- certain amount. Um but I wonder if that might be also an opportunity where. If there's families that she's on her radar for supporting that are like have the I E Ps or or needs that are in the preschool or kindergarten. Maybe those might be an opportunity that she can connect in my making, is that, do you think Heather, that sounds reasonable? I'm sorry, let me let, maybe Heather can speak a little bit, and sorry.
No, that's fine, um so just a couple of thoughts is, um you know, I heard people talking about students who are at risk. I heard um people talking about families who have financial um difficulties. And then there's mention of the um Megan Girardi is part of our wraparound services, we have a part of um. F S P, um and that is a service that we have for um students and families who are just. Struggling in various ways, who might need. Struggling in various ways who might need, um, assistance with counseling services. And or being able to provide, um, resources that within the communities around. Um, that either the students or the, the parents could benefit from. Um, so. I just wanna make sure, so there's a couple of different topics here. So.
Yeah.
Let me just shed a couple of different things as I was listening, I was thinking about. Um, is I know that, um, when thinking about students who are at risk. Um, we are, um, Karen and I working on making sure that the community through. Um, smores and Facebooks and things, um, are encouraging families to have their preschoolers come in and get screened this spring. So that when we're thinking about like those at-risk children and knowing that we want to have them. Get whatever services they might need if they were to qualify for disability. That they're having that opportunity to do the screening, which gives us a little bit of insight as to whether or not. Um, we might need to do further exploration and that would be at no commitment of, you know, there's no nine thousand dollars attached to it or anything. It's just an opportunity where, hey, come in and have your preschooler screened. And so I think that that's one way of getting some of these families who might not have traditionally come in. Um, getting their foot in the door as well as giving us some information as far as like, you know, these are. Some, um, assessments that we can do to just give us again, like that little snapshot of information. And then sometimes when we see families come in or students come in, we realize that the needs might be more significant and then we're able to, um. Identify students even earlier, right? And not just relying just on early intervention companies to refer them out or pediatricians. But we're also trying to welcome those families to come in on their own. And then that gives them a little bit of their in the building, they're seeing what's going on. Um, and we can just have those natural conversations about, you know, what does. Um, tuition look like? What options are there if we're having difficulties? What forms can we give them and resources can we give them? And I think that, um, Megan being a great resource through like what resources are. Um, she is able to give schools resources to share out of things like this. So. Um, it's not necessarily putting families on her radars, but making sure that we have resources from her. That we can share it with families that might need them. Her, um, contracts with very particular families are very. Significant needs where, you know, it's probably a higher level than what our counseling teams are able to support. And so we have that, but we have multiple ways that we use Megan's resources, right? So preschool kindergarten, when people are just entering education, sometimes they just need a little bit of guidance. And so Megan gives the school teams that guidance, so then they can give the family the guidance. So those are a couple of the thoughts that I had while I was listening into the conversation.
Thank you. I, I hated to put you on the spot, but I'm just thinking about some of the things we were having and CPAC has been. And Megan's joined CPAC a couple of times and talking about, um, some of those wraparound, um, services that are available when kids are identified. Um, so I thought there might be some relevance and I'm glad to hear that you and Karen are already.
We are on top of it. We are collaborating. We already have plans. We're trying to figure out platforms we wanna use, how we can keep the platforms easy, easy to use, but also confidential. Um, and then also working with technology, getting their input. So, cause we're trying to make it. Really easy for families to just like click sign up for that screener and then come on in, um, and. Also a part of Child Find, yeah, I heard someone talking about the food pantry. We're sending forms out to all of these community, um, kind of places, um. Says, I heard you mention in the meetings, also, um, you know, other preschools in town. Um, we're sending them out to churches in town. We're sending them out to, we have a huge list. I actually, actually just sent it to CPAC not too long ago. Probably last week. Rhonda has a nice long list of all the places in towns that she's sending this information out to. Again, encouraging families who feel like their child might be at risk, wanna learn a little bit more. Reach out to those schools so that we're able to give them some guidance and, you know, tell them where we start, what step comes next.
Okay, um, Mary, I know that you brought up, I just wanna finish, make sure I finish with you first, um.
Pantry and I have not received anything. So I would love to have flyers available of that for some of our families. So I don't know if this is in the works or.
September, so is it? Say that again?
I have not seen anything.
I will resend them. We can do it tomorrow.
How many other places have not, you know, have not actually received them? So I would love that.
I can look into that and see what kind of confirmations we've gotten and how we're delivering them. What would be the best way to get it to the food pantry? What's the easiest? Is it email? Is it, is it snail mail? What works best for you?
Me a flyer and I'll make it available.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, thanks, Mary. I'm glad we kinda connected at this point, um.
So if you didn't get it, that's good for me to know.
No, appreciate it. Mary, did you have any other budget questions or anything for, um, on this, along these lines? All right, um, Heather, I, I think that Wayne, I don't wanna touch it, but I, I think, um, Heather, I mean, um. Hillary had, it looked like she had her hand up. Was it a question for Heather?
Yeah, it's sort of a spinoff of what she's talking about. Um, I was thinking of reaching out to D C F to their childcare coordinator. Um, because I know a lot of foster parents and kids involved with D C F talk about how. You know, they have to pick between, they would love their kids to go to the integrated preschool even as a non-I E P kid. But they need the free childcare through the voucher somewhere else. And so they're not even pursuing it and, um. So like they might be, you know, those kids are obviously at high risk. Um, and then, uh, also Emily Black. At the police department who would be working with the families that are really struggling, um, that aren't involved in the school system yet. Would be probably the person to, to connect with, um.
Those are great ideas. They, and those two were not on my list. So thank you so much. I will absolutely reach out to them and give them those, those, that information as well.
And then another thing I've heard from the foster parents support group is that sometimes do ask. People who have high-risk kids to do the preschool screening, even though your kid doesn't have a diagnosis and probably won't qualify. Um, because through the preschool screening, they're saying this kid is high need, this kid is gonna cost us a lot of money when they're older, we'd rather pay for the money now. And then through that screening process, they're identifying the kids to give scholarships to.
Yeah, I'm not even worried about the money at this point. I just wanna make sure that if they have needs, that we're able to identify them and get them the services that you need. So. All preschoolers should be participating in screening. All kindergartners should be participating in screeners. Just to give us that extra layer of information and then we can move forward if we need to. So it's definitely just best practice.
I guess I mean, we're, if we're talking about like offering a scholarship to preschool, I don't, I think that. There's a benefit to targeting that to the kids who truly need that environment. Like there's, you know, obviously kids, especially as an I E Ps need that environment, but also kids that are high need because of English language learning. Or, you know, significant issues at home, um. Could really benefit from that environment too. And so a way to targeted, target that financial support. To those kids that really desperately need it and whose parents probably aren't Googling integrated preschools. For fun, because they're dealing with other stuff.
I think it sounds like if they go to the, if they're gonna go to the screening, that they have that opportunity to connect and provide.
I think it's different if like Mary hands on the fly, if Mary sees a family struggling or the police, the police are at a house with a toddler. And seeing that, you know, things aren't great in the home during the day and it'd be great to have that kid in a safe place where they're getting care, like the attention they need during the day. And they say, call this phone number, this person will help you and it's calling the meadow and they bring the kid in and they're like, this kid definitely needs help. They don't qualify under, you know, the I E P chart, but, you know, for whatever reason, they need that support. And so. On its own, it might not be a great memory, but if it's, if it's compounded with the outreach that Heather and Karen are doing. And, you know, working with these other people that are, have the interactions with the really high need kids. I think that it could be helpful and reach populations that wouldn't be reached by Googling the preschool in town.
And this is really a back to the scholarship idea you're ha, you're thinking about?
Yeah, like to target, cause I, I wanted us to pay, I wanted us to provide preschool to the really high need kids that don't. Don't qualify under I E P, um, and. You know, there's like, I know a lot of kids that have vouchers and aren't gonna go to preschool because they don't wanna give up the voucher for the home daycare they go to. But could really, really benefit from that targeted skilled environment. And so, like a way to. Help the financial need get to financial support, get to the kids who truly have the highest need.
I would say though, that those families who are using those vouchers to attend other preschools in towns, if there's not a disability present. They are getting structured in instruction from those centers. So it's not that they're, they're not, and that we would hope that. If they were developing appropriately, that they would be able to access those activities and lessons and, um, the things that those private organizations. Are able to offer. And so hopefully that is helping with those experiences, um. You know, when they're not able to access those experiences because there is some type of developmental delay or disability. And they need like a higher, more specialized instruction. That's where the, um. That's where I feel like the integrate, like that's why we want to identify them so much younger so that. We're getting them ready for those like school age years moving forward. Um, but again, those families with the vouchers, if you're able to go to any of the preschools in town, whether it's the one at Green Meadow or the others. Those, the child should be benefiting from those environments.
Yeah, definitely. Tiffany, let's go, I just have a quick money question about this. Um, to try and give you back off of this, have we ever thought about as a school committee or school for preschool? Doing the tuition based upon a sliding scale. Uh, there are a lot of local camps that do it based upon a family's income. So the more A P M you have, the more you pay. Um, and the less you have, it still provides the opportunity for the students to go. And they pay dramatically less and it's made up by the families that have the ability to cover those costs. Have we ever thought about that versus having the families have to go through the next hoop of asking for. A scholarship program?
So maybe Brian, if we, I know at one point we, we have, the school committee sets the rates. Um, so maybe Brian has an agenda item for a future meeting, um. That might be a discussion point to look at the tuition rates. I don't wanna, I don't, I know that right now probably isn't a good time to, to prepare, but that's a, that would be a good discussion like that. With scholarship, all of those pieces that I think a little bit fall outside of, um. Wayne's immediate report, but I wanted to make sure that as it was talking about the needs, I saw Heather and it. My mind clicked with the CPAC thing and I, um, glad you were listening to kind of, um. Add to that, you know, at least provide that little.
Wouldn't it have been embarrassing if I wasn't paying attention?
Like eating your, in your jammies or whatever, but no, no shame to that either. It is not. Thank you so much, Heather. Sorry to put you on the spot and Wayne, sorry to. Wayne about, you know, he's probably like, hey, steal my thunder.
I took over.
No, that was all me. Wayne, thank you very much, uh, for your patience and I appreciate. I don't, I wanna go back. I think, Mary, you, you were speaking about the high needs and did you get all, and the funding? Are you okay with that for now?
I'm all good. Thank you.
Okay, all right, Mauro?
Um, I don't, I don't have anything. Wayne, you did a great job as usual. Um, thank you very much. Um, I did, I don't know Natasha, if you, if Dana with B has her hand up, but I don't, I don't. Oh, now she took you down.
Honestly, I, I didn't even notice it, Dana. I'm so sorry. Um, I don't know if you had to blink around by accident, but. Normally we don't get public comments, but I'm just gonna assume that was just, I saw your hand go down, so maybe it must've been just an accident. Sorry, I didn't see you earlier either. Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mauro, for putting that out. I didn't, I didn't have her on my screen, um. Anything else, Mauro?
No, uh, that's it.
Okay, Hillary?
Um, Wayne, my question is, logistically, as far as money from the federal government goes. What's the timing of when it's dispersed and like when it's ordered and when it's dispersed and when it. Like when would we actually feel the impact of the changes of the funding from the federal government, like? Month, like month wise?
Well, that food, fresh fruits and vegetables, that's immediate.
Yep. When does Title One funding, um, from the feds to the state to the school? It's a calculation. Is that more what you're?
Yeah, like Title One, um, circuit breaker.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, I don't know. I just manage the money. I don't manage the grants. I'd have to talk to, uh, Charles about that.
Circuit breaker, I think is, is, is state. That's not federal, right? Isn't it like a reimbursement for?
Yeah, circuit breaker, uh, gets paid quarterly. That's from the state, but the point is. Is as other monies are cut from the feds coming to the state, at some point the state may have to. Uh, review their budget and subsequently things could get cut. Um, but you're right, it comes from the state, not, not federal government.
And, um, I D E A, I think, um, it's, it's listed on the, I know all of those entitlement grants. They're on Desi's website and they actually might say when they are dispersed. I don't know off, off the top of my hand, but I know you, they, they do track those, like the Title One, the I D E A, um.
We usually get, uh, the money. Uh, or at least approval of the money, cause technically it's a reimbursement, but.
Right.
Usually, uh, somewhere between August and October, uh, depending on the grant. Um, and so as of, and tonight we speak, there has not been any cuts in those, but. Uh, I, I, I listened to the news like all of you and the fact that Department of Education has been slashed by fifty percent. Um, you wonder, even if the funding isn't cut, what if the people that administer those and send the money out? Are, are gone.
Right. Well, that is enough to lose sleep over. I'm glad we're ending on a positive note. Um, Wayne, thank you very much. Does anybody else have any other questions for, for Wayne? Um. Wayne, while I have you here, um, and I'm sorry, I, I, I saved uploaded to, um, to our folder tonight, but I. Had, um. Um, you had shared some, we had talked about net school spending and per people spending. And, um, you had shared with Mary and I, um, some of that back and forth, cause the question came up in the budget subcommittee. About like our, the administrative number and how, how that is calculated. I think on the, on Desi's website, it looks back up until. F Y twenty-three and, um, you know, we just doing our due diligence, want to make sure like we can explain. How that calculation, the number, you know, gets in effect. A lot of people. Are under the belief that's, you know, the school has this really heavy administrative cost and. I, you know, I've heard conversations about the, the two principal, you know, model and all this stuff. So thank you very much for you and Brian for really kind of going deep on, um, that analysis and reaching out to the state. Um, and for the school committee, I, I fo, I put, um, I just saved a document, if you refresh the folder. Of, um, I put a sheet in there that has the analysis of. Um, the expenses that, um, since F Y fifteen, uh, what the allocations that. We, um, are attributed from the town and that's the key. That administrative number. Uh, that's part of the net school spending formula is not solely the school department's administration. So part of shared services, the town does, so like accounting, like they issue, you know, things. That gets calculated. There's a certain percentage that, uh, they attribute and over the years, it's ranged from like. Two hundred up until I think, looked like F Y twenty-three was like four, four thousand, I don't know, four, forty-six. Four hundred and sixty thousand or something, um, which came out to higher than the school's administrative number. So that amount, the, what they attribute to the school, like to support the school. Gets added to what the school actually uses for education and that has how, that's why that number. Appears very significantly inflated. And so, um, Brian and I. Um, met, we had a leadership meeting this week. We met with Greg and, uh, Jeff. And, um, and you know, we, we, you know, brought this up, cause I know that they've, this law board has questioned. Um, the levels of that and. um, the levels of that. And ultimately, there are guidelines around what is allowable, what's not allowable. And um, the the state recommends having a an agreement in place um, that um, that what is, you know, what both parties are. Um, Wayne and Brian, I just sent an email to you guys. It was kind of um and Mary, I C C'd you, but it was kind of in response of looking at the advisory at the state level. Um, there are certain discretionary things like the state is entitled to do. And when I bounce that against what I'm seeing that we've had, there's a couple of uh variations that are a little bit off. So the advisory says like town council, um, you know, it should not be expensed or attributed to the school. Um, one of the areas on the expenses that we've seen since F Y twenty was facilities director and or facility salary. And um we don't, they don't pay for any facility sal, we don't, we don't leverage any town facilities person salary that I'm aware of. Um, we pay for our own facility director entirely. And I think that started around F Y twenty. So I don't know if there was like some mistake in, you know, what they're doing, but um, so I I I suggested that, you know, those are the two that jumped out. I think um, I would like to um make sure that we are, if there's any opportunity to corrective, retroactive corrective action on some of those pieces that we know are 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 not accurate. I'd really like to see how we can do that so that our numbers actually are reflective um of what's true and not um overinflated, like peg access. I don't know why they would be attributing expenses for peg access. They don't actually do anything for peg access. They they probably just journal money to us or whatever, but there's no person that actually is doing a service for the school. So um, you know, I just had some questions about how that number. So all this to say, um, I I I did let the uh Jeff and Greg know that um, we would, you know, the school committee would be um wanting to prioritize an M O A in F Y twenty-six is as a, as a priority, so that we can get a better handling on what these um, what's allowable, what's not allowable. And we all have a better understanding of what is being attributed to the school, like they are adding staff. But are those added staff actually supporting the school and we're just paying twenty percent because they keep adding? Or, you know, that's what I'm not really clear on. So I just wanted to share this update. This was kind of, I thought, um, helpful information. Um, that came up, but in case any of us get asked about, like, it comes up, I think, in all of our conversations. People ask about administrative cost. This was a little bit of that background and context that it's not the schools, the school's administrative cost is is separate. It's a small, a much significantly smaller it's number. So if we wanted to recalculate our administrative costs, uh, Brian, and you did this, I think, right? You and Wayne had done, like, if it was only the schools, it was like came down significantly.
So it was uh, it was like two hundred ninety-three thousand and if we use that number and then did the calculation, our administrative cost would have been about eight hundred and eleven dollars per pupil, which would have put us in line with similar districts. Um, and and the facilities thing, I, I think you're right. I think that is a leftover from when the town ran our facilities program. And Guzzo, before he left, he and I talked about reviewing that because it hasn't been updated in the five years I've been here and probably a couple of years before that. Um, so it is outdated and you're right, I questioned why we were being charged for peg when the peg funds, if you look at the town's own printout, th- there's, there's no charge and the town takes a cut of the peg for their own use to begin with. So I don't know what the charge on that sheet, that chargeback sheet that I put on the end of year report, which is where Desi gets all that data that you saw. I don't see why, it's all like we're getting double charged. They're not doing anything for it.
I think it's just a matter of understanding. Clearly, no one really knew how that factored into that that number. Um, but you know, I think what we can do is now we know and we'll do better. We'll have a deeper analysis of that. And I think once we codify of what that is, again, um, I I know that what we get in revenue from the contracts for peg isn't entirely enough to support, you know, like W A B M. And there is part of a budgetary amount that the uh, out of the general government, I think that may subsidize it a little bit. However, I think that's more of a journal a- action, you know, versus um, you know, them having a personnel, administrative personnel who's you know, handling peg or something that it, you know, I want to make sure that that party just gets ironed out for all of us. Um, and and also, I don't think, even if it was valid, I think that that's a different line. It's more of educational. I don't even think it belongs in the one thousands anyway. I think it would go into more of maybe two thousands or instructions or something. So that's, that's the other part too, is once we figure out what's valid and what's true, then making sure it goes into the right category, because not all of that is administrative. Like, even if the facilities was valid, it's not administrative. We, our facilities go elsewhere. And the facilities, I think, was just an error because it only started in F Y twenty. And I know that that's when we uh created that position. Um, it was originally gonna be like a shared position, like twenty percent the town. And it looks like they built that into their budget. They just um, they never changed it. So they actually are not spending twenty percent of a position we're spending. We, right, Brian, just to confirm, that that salary is fully funded by the school, correct? That's what we end up.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, so they're basically, we're funding the whole position and they're, and then they're attributing twenty percent. So I would like to know who that person is, because they're owed, they're owing us five, five years of a twenty percent services that I'd like to get a refund for. Anyway, that's all I had. I put a link, I put a document in the, in the folder just to comp, um just copied what the email that I responded to Brian and Wayne and Mary, I I for you as well, just and um, the um, the sheet, the expense sheet for everyone, the school committee to to look over. Um, just so you can kind of get some thoughts on that, but and I put my initial thoughts, which were really around looking at that link to that advisory. Um, that's kind of what jumped out, maybe a good starting point to really understand what's allowable and what's not. Um, part of that, it's called discretionary, requires a school committee approval. So if it falls into that discretionary bucket, which is what facilities is, then it shouldn't be there, because there's no school committee approval that we would be approving any type of facility expense um to be charged to the school. The only thing we have is what's outlined in our M O U. And that's if there's services and we already pay for those um separately. They don't pay on their, our behalf. So if they were to charge back to us, and they're double dipping, because we pay them um, when they, when they do the services. So um, that's all I had. I don't know if anyone had any questions on that. It was just one quick update, just because I thought it was important and relevant. Um, for anyone. Wayne, thank you very much for that work and Brian as well. Um, so we'll talk about it again at our next, maybe a budget subcommittee meeting on, like, you know, updates from that. Mary, anything?
Right.
Okay, Hillary? Our Mauro?
No.
All right, Alexis, no?
No.
All right. Um, I think we are good with that. And now we're just going ahead and um
Wayne. Thank you.
Wayne, thank you so much. Um, all right, where am I with my agenda? Um, oh, I think I clo, I had too many folders open. Oh, here we go. All right, so um override um F F Y twenty-six. Um, I'm gonna actually table the, the, the budget hearing, because Colleen needs to be um available for for that conversation. But just preliminary speaking on on that topic. Um, I was thinking that we would have a budget hearing that um assumes the override passes. And then if it doesn't, then we have to gen, you know, have another um, you know, meeting, you know, to redo the budget. But I didn't want to spend a lot of our effort, this, you know, the school department's effort on, you know, trying to figure out or approving. I don't think we all, any of us want to approve a two point five percent budget. And I don't want to go through the effort of pretending like that's actually a viable option. Yes, Hillary?
Well, I think actually, to some extent, that could be an important thing to do, because I think that once the community learns that we're gonna go for override and we publicize this budget hearing, I think it'd be important for people to understand what our budget would look like, what we would have to approve, given the two point five. And so
We can't, we can't do that, though. We can't, um.
I know that we can't advertise it in that way, but do we need to? How do we vote on a budget that we don't have access to? And so
We do that every year. We always have our budget hearing before town meeting.
I know that, but like there's you know, and I, that's like what sort of the town has agreed to or suggested upfront. And so it's like a reasonable assumption to go into the budget hearing with. But I think to some extent, we we need to take seriously the idea that an override might not pass. And as part of the preparation for that very, very real possibility involves conversations that I think are important to have. I I think that the ti- town community members that would come to our budget hearing shouldn't leave there thinking everything's good. Like, you know, there's this override, they're gonna get the override, and this is gonna be the situation. Like, I think we need to, to some extent, be realistic about what might ha, very possibly could happen. Even if we hope, like, you know, like, hope for the best, plan for the worst. Like, I think we may, we maybe need to do a little bit more planning for the worst.
So Brian and, yeah, we did talk with, that's already in the works, like Brian and Wayne are like, you know, they are planning like a go nuclear, you know, you know, like what happens if it doesn't pass, right? No one's assuming it's gonna pass, Hillary. I'm not assuming that at all. I also finish, I could just finish. Yeah, I also want to make sure that we're respecting the guidelines of what is allowable to discuss ahead of an override, because I've already been given warning about what can be discussed. I want to make sure staff are not, you know, um, put in a position that we are like um at, like, eh, there's a lot of those pieces that I'm very uncomfortable with personally. Um, if we're advertising a budget that's really not what we're going to town meeting for. We're not going to town meeting with a two point five percent budget. We've already told them. That's part of what we're saying. We're going to town meeting with a one. That's what we're recommending. So I, it makes no sense why we would have a budget hearing for what the town recommends, because that's not what we're recommending. We've already accepted Brian's recommendation, and that's what we would make our budget for, is what we're, we've recommended. If it doesn't get approved or it gets changed, then yes, we have to come back. And we could talk about like that process when we have our budget hearing, like, hey, this is only possible if there's funding that's approved for the town. But we need to recognize if this does not get passed, then yes, there will be another hearing that talks about what that two percent, two point five percent, but those numbers of where that's gonna happen isn't gonna be known in the next month. That's my worry, is that, that's what a budget hearing you have to do. You have to explain like where that is. And I don't think any of us at this point are prepared to to do that. I don't know. I would, that's what I would, I would, I assume. I know, Brian, do you think that in the next month, that you would want to talk about what a two point five percent budget looks like in the positions that might be impacted? But I'm sorry, would you?
To, or research.
May first, May first.
Okay, so if it has, what ifs? All right, so if it has to be May first, don't you have to have a plan? So aren't we gonna know over the course of the next month what Stafford, because i- it's going to be, a lot of it is staff reduction. Um, aren't you going to know that by then? Because you've got to give people big slips, right?
I think the practice and confirm is that they get like, because there's the uncertainty. Brian, did you can confirm the procedural piece? I've heard historically, like there, everyone or positions that might get impacted would get that. They get the notice. Wait, hold on, okay, wait, finish, please. And um, from a procedural perspective, they would get that until we know for certain. Is that normally how the process works?
Yeah.
Okay, so would that, that would still be the same, right? We would still, May first?
Right.
Okay, so.
So technically, I'm gonna ask this. So technically, you're gonna go off of the assumption when you're making these plans for May first, you're gonna go off the assumption that the budget is what we, what the town is giving us.
We don't have a number for the town.
Yeah, I know, because I read your notice that that has shifted um potentially, so.
So we, we typically have two. We have what you allocate.
Yeah.
Because that's what we typically spend.
Yeah.
Because we use our revolvers.
But we're not gonna have enough of that.
We'll have a significant portion of. We don't want to use them to that level.
Correct. Because we're gonna be in the same position next year.
Right.
Actually, we're there won't be any revolvers to use.
If I could separate the two topics, like the recommendation and the budget hearing, just because I want to make sure we're clear on the budget hearing part first, of how we want to proceed. And then we can talk about like the recommendation, the tiered stuff, because I want to, that I think is is super like important to hone in on as well, like what we want to send to the the select board. But for the budget hearing, how, Hillary, I I hear you, what you're saying um about you know, being upfront and and honest, you know, with, I don't think anyone's saying not to be upfront or honest. Um, but I'm just thinking about how we've proceeded in the past and what we would need to share at that point in April, which may not be known.
When we go to the budget hearing, the final value might be unknown, but we have a really good sense and there's flexibility with revolving accounts, like pretty much what we allocate at that budget hearing is gonna be doable. You know, with some of the world. I think in this case, you know, and even what what Alexis was saying about the certification date on May first, I feel like the reason that that's a requirement is to be upfront with people so that they can plan their lives and understand their families and their situations. And I think if we go forward saying, you know, either masking it by saying this is, we're allocating the desired budget or by masking it by giving everybody that could potentially be impacted a slip, we're really not being, letting people make the decision. We're not providing the information in an upfront and clear way for people to make the decisions they need to make regarding all sorts of things. Um, you know, and regarding how they advocate at the town, or regarding how they talk to their, you know, elected representatives, regarding how they talk regarding how employees make decisions about their futures. I I feel like we're I, as we were talking, I feel like, you know, it it makes me think of, you know, hugging my child when she's talking about our Disney chip that I know so well I can't pay for, like, I
No one, no one is masking anything. I think we've all been very clear with our conversations tonight, even with the powers, that we do not have, like, what we're getting is not sufficient. However, anytime we have a budget hearing, it is always contingent on what happens at town meeting. Someone could get on the floor of town meeting and change the budget. Like, that is always the X. So we approve, that's why people get noticed, because it's not, nothing is firm until town meeting happens. So that's just the process there. No one's masking, pretending, like those words to me are like not true. I don't think any one of us is pretending like it's gonna pass. I'm just saying that focusing on doing a whole budget, having a budget hearing for two and a half percent is actually not actually true, because we're not actually recommending that budget to town meeting. So I will not be in a position to advocate for that and say, this is what we're gonna approve. I'm not approving. So I will not be in a position to advocate for that and say, this is what we're going to approve. I'm not approving that budget. I'm not approving as a school committee member, two and a half percent ever. And that's what a budget, that's what a budget hearing does, is you're actually having a hearing on a budget you intend to approve. You intend to approve a two and a half budget, two and a half percent budget before town meeting? I'm just genuine question, does anyone want to approve a two and a half percent budget ahead of town meeting? Cause that to me sounds like backwards.
I agree that I don't want to approve it at all. I would love for the override to happen. Believe me, I would. With the students alone, I would like the override to happen. However, my concern is for people to understand what actually goes on and to give people that information and to know, it feels very disconcerting to me to not go into this with the, here's plan A and here's our backup. If this doesn't pass, I mean, there are teachers who get a pink slip in May and then the middle of August, they get rehired. They go the entire time not knowing whether or not they're going to have a job. And their teachers, this happens to every single year. They get pink, let go. And then they come back in August.
Part of the budget, how it happened, the town, the state doesn't approve the budget. Like, that's outside of this particular scope. Like, that's what I've
I, and I get that. However, if Brian and the administration is going to have to start making these decisions for Plan B, even though we don't want to vote on it because we don't like it and we don't want those changes to be made, I think we have to be aware of it, of what's going to happen, what that Plan B is going to look like. Um,
Maybe that's a separate, yeah, is it a separate exercise and then a budget hearing then? Maybe that's just talking about like what happens if, generally speaking, right, having the conversation as a school committee.
Parents and staff to be here for that conversation, but that's just me.
You know, in preparation for town meeting, if a parent is like, oh crap, they want this much money, I need to figure out what's going on. And they go back and look at their recordings, they're going to pick the town, but the school budget hearing to go watch the recording of. They're not going to pick March thirteenth, looking at this agenda to think this is where I'm going to get a good overview of the school's budget plan. And we haven't waited. This isn't a good meeting to, this like, you know, this wouldn't be the good meeting to watch. The budget hearing would be the one to go to, to gather all that information.
Right, because we're only talking about planning. That's the only thing tonight we're talking about. It actually isn't the budget hearing. It's just the planning of what we want to do for the budget hearing. So that's what it, the, the point was, is that the budget hearing is generally in April. Okay, the budget hearing is intended to be the budget that the school committee will be voting on based on the superintendent's recommendation. That's what a budget hearing is. And so by action of that, I do not think the budget hearing should be the school committee preemptively voting for a two and a half percent budget because of multiple reasons. One, I feel that that says we are not advocating our hardest, that we're just accepting two and a half percent. And I do not accept two and a half percent. I think that there is a risk, of course, of that it not last night getting the override, but I am not going to preemptively say, we're just going to make it work. I think that sends the wrong message and I am not okay with that. I also don't think it's fair to our staff and our community to get them pink slips earlier that they actually don't have a job, that we're approving that before and we're not going to bat and at least waiting to see the outcome of town meeting before we say, look, we've done our best. And I'm sorry, we tried, we best. But if us, if we go through the effort of approve a budget for two and a half percent, what does that say to town meeting? You see, you guys made it work.
I don't think that what Hillary is saying is that we, we bring this to the, the budget hearing as what we want to happen. But it's absolutely imperative that our constituents know what will happen if this override doesn't go through. And where else are we going to give that information but at the budget meeting?
So then that could be a, a part of the discussion piece where we would say, we are going to be voting on this budget, like the recommendation. However, Brian, again, what Brian and Wayne are talking about, they could talk about areas that will be impacted, you know, like, like bus fees, like athletic fees, like larger class sizes, like those kind of things that will be generally talked about, those concepts. But I don't think us voting on what that looks like at a dollar amount for a budget hearing is what we were, were, we want to do. And I'm, I don't know, I just want to make sure that, that the takeaway is, we want to talk about it. Right? It is the important conversation, but we are behind saying our original recommendations, we think we need more than that.
Right, same here.
Okay, so I just want to make sure we're kind of bringing it all together. The budget hearing will still be about the larger number that we're going to vote on. But part of that conversation will outline if the override doesn't pass, these are the areas are impacted.
I think that it's not a brief discussion of saying if the override doesn't pass, it's, there's going to be serious effects. I think
No one is saying it's brief. Nobody's going to say it's brief. Don't put words.
That's not my point though. It's, I feel like we need to lay out all of the details the same way. So we're saying, the budget recommendation is this breakdown, these cost centers, this, um, pie chart. And if we go with what we have, this is all of that exact same information with the, the budget that's been offered to us. And not just as like a side note, but actually truly, this is the budget that we're looking at. And this is how we would allocate it if we need to. But hopefully we could get this budget, we can allocate it just like.
I would not be in favor of at all making a two and a half percent budget look feasible. I don't want to go through that effort of making it like, no, because then that's, that's really, really specific. And I don't think, I think we could talk about the areas are impacted. We're going to have public hearings. I actually just go onto the planning, you know, but I do not feel comfortable in any way to say, I think we, everyone knows, it's two and, it's a million dollars short is a lot of freaking money. Okay? Everything will be impacted. You know, but I'm, and I do not want to spend effort in posting information for the public that is actually not necessarily going to be final in which true yet. I think it's going to create more confusion. Are you guys recommending this budget? Like, I don't want to even put a face that we're recommending that or we're accepting that in any capacity.
I don't think anybody would think that, you know. Nobody's going to look at a budget proposal that eliminates a million dollars and think that we're okay with that, right? I also don't think we need to reinvent the wheel right now. I think we can look at what other towns who have sought overrides did at their budget hearing. Like, what's Acton do at their budget hearing? What's Hudson, what's Hudson planning to do? Cause maybe there is a way that this is supposed to be done. Um, brass mask or something like, I don't know.
I mean, I think a lot of people think that schools have a magic pot of money that they can just delve into because we did have a magic pot of money for several years during COVID, where schools could dip into it to provide those things that were needed during that period of time, but that magic pot of money is gone. Uh, and the select board refers to that magic pot of money during town meetings. So, so I, I I want people to be able to go into this with eyes wide open. And I think the more transparent we are with how significant this is on the schools and the impact. Should this not pass, we have to find a way to legally do it so that people are aware of it and have as much information as possible. Because then they can then start talking to other people. There are things we can't say as school committee members. Like, we can't say how many positions are absolutely on the chopping block during town meeting. However, there are things that people can infer from the information we present based upon what happens if we don't get a million dollars or more than a million dollars, depending on if the town allocation goes down. Uh, you know, they can infer a lot of things. I mean, a lot of people think people are stupid when it comes to this stuff. They're actually smarter than we think they are. Uh, and so I think being able to present it and for them to be able to then start talking about it actually helps us in our attempts to get an override pass. And so I, I mean, I would rather be more transparent than people going into it thinking, well, all will be good because they have a magic pot of money. If for some reason it doesn't go through, because we've been fine up until this point. I'm con- I'm concerned about that.
Um, Hillary, to your question earlier, a lot of towns approve, like this is exactly what they do. They approve what's recommended and then it goes to town. And if it doesn't, they, I've seen this happen with contracts. They do, they agree on a contract. And then the town doesn't approve the money and then they have to go back and cut people. So a lot of it, it as well as intended that the school may want, it's ultimately the town meeting is really where that pivot is. Um, so.
That happens, but I know, you know, Acton last year had a budget A and a budget B. And all of the, the same level of detail for both of those was presented on all the websites and the handouts and the town voted literally, do you want to approve budget A or do you want to approve budget B at town meeting? So there is options, um.
For the town budget you're talking about?
For the school budget. The school, at town meeting last year, Acton and Roxborough presented budget A and budget B. And if A didn't pass, then they wanted a budget B. And budget A was the better one for the schools, or basically, I don't remember exactly, but yeah, they, when that one passed, then, you know, if everybody those two choices and see what they
So, um, maybe we pivot then to talk about the recommendation for the school because I think what you're talking about is kind of what we would be presenting to the select board. The select board is open to hearing what that dollar amount is that we would be presenting, that would go on the warrant um, for the school allocation. They are not going to be putting two and a half percent as part of the, actually the select board are going to be sponsoring the article. Okay, and so there is support that we are looking to go. So that's where I think the op, I don't know whatever option A was for Acton Boxborough or whatever, but I'm sure it wasn't to cut. I don't know if that's what they would
Some of our cuts, but that's not really going
Yeah, so I don't, like, I'm not really concerned with what Acton Boxborough did. I just want to make sure we're moving us forward in, in the decisions we need to make to best position us. So what I think we left off at our workshop at was, um, a million dollars is what we felt comfortable with at that point. And, um, and then it would, uh, potentially require two hundred thousand for, um, a number that if we needed to tap in, um, for our revolving accounts. So do we still want to say like, hey, we would like one number? But if we can't have one number, then this is what the number alternative would be. So like, maybe that first number would be, um, like we talked about, one million and relying on our revolvers for about two hundred thousand. And then maybe that second number is one point two million and not leaning into our revolvers. And so that's what people would vote on. I don't know if anyone has any particular thoughts on what that would be.
I have a question. Brian's memo that he sent earlier. Um, Brian's memo that he sent earlier said that allocation could go down further than what they've already told us. So if that's the case and we ask for a million dollars using two hundred of the revolvers and their allocation goes down more, then aren't we on the hook? So to speak, for the rest of what they reduce?
I'm sorry. I may have missed your first part of your question about the allocation.
So Brian put in the memo that he sent a few hours ago.
Yep.
That allocation could go down. It could, from what they have told us, that there's a possibility that it could go down even further.
Mm-hmm.
So we put in, if we say, because I know we were in agreement for the million dollars and that we would use some of the revolvers to do that, and there's enough to replenish them and use them for several years by doing it that way. If the allocation goes down, then we would then technically be in a hole for that amount because it's not in what we're requesting for the override and it's not what we agreed for the revolvers. So wouldn't we still be in a deficit because the town has chosen to allocate less than what they've told us at this point?
We would, we could amend our number. So we're, we would be basing it now based on what, what, and Greg didn't, yeah, Greg, right. So it's, right now it's two and a half percent, right? Um, but there's information that comes in that changes. So if, you know, if that changes, then we may need to, you know, change our, you know, recommendation as well. Um, and the way Greg, um, discussed, I think he's going to talk with Lisa Mead about, um, that he would approve a budget contingent on like override passing or something like that. Um, or if it didn't pass, they, so at town meeting, um, we would know at that when we leave there, you know, like it's going to be this number or, or, or it's with the override. Um, so I think that's a good question. Um, we can certainly make sure that's part of our um, recommendation that we send to them. Like, you know, our recommendation is assuming that, you know, is with the assumption that the two point five recommendation for FY twenty six remains in that, you know, we would reserve the right to amend our, you know, recommendation number if that changes.
Isn't the word, and I don't remember the timing, or does the word have to be written, the
You can change it on the, on the floor.
You can change it on the floor.
Um, with, with, uh, override, uh, we'll see. But yeah, you can change, you can change budget recommendations on the floor. Um, but we have time, um, we have up until about April, I don't know, sometime in early April first, April eighth, about, um, when the, uh, article will need to be finalized for, so. Um, so how does, again, how does everyone feel still? Is everyone still prefacing a one number? And if we could have a one number, and then if, if it is, if it's not a one number, then it would be like, again, one, one point, one point two, and then what maybe, I mean, uh, one hun- one million and then then one point two?
One number. One, just keep it simple. Yeah, I say nine, 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 nine. Yeah.
So you want to go in with the number that, and I don't know if they're going to be fine with this, but you want to go in, you don't want to, you want to go with a number that assumes we're relying on our revolvers. You don't want to have a second number that doesn't rely on our revolvers.
Because then you can say we've compromised it seriously.
Well, that's why I was, that's why I was, because we've already told them, we, we've taken the, the career position that's not included anymore. So they know that. Um, so that's kind of
One now is one millions. That's a big compromise. That's a big, it's a large compromise.
So that's why I want to say, do we want to say like, okay, that one number would be one point, and maybe that's the number everyone votes for. But then we don't, I don't, I don't know. Do we want to exclude the opportunity that people might want to vote for the?
We're just going to mess, yeah, because we're going to split the number rather than even everybody go on one. You know, fifty percent of people saying one point two, fifty percent saying one, and we're not going to get either one of them. Right? That's my
Oh, I don't think it, no, that's not how it counts. That's not how it goes though. It's, it's, it's the one that gets the majority.
Most numbers wins. I use number wins, my friend left.
But in that chart too, they had said if we were over a certain amount, one of whatever came out of the, the budget committee, um, the subcommittee was one of those, they split it, where you started second and half. If it appeared if we were over a certain amount of money, they wanted to split it half and half. So you might get half, but you might not get the other half. So I think if we stick closer to the numbers that they put in for like the one where
Yeah.
The nine hundred thousand, they were okay with nine hundred thousand and leaving it on its own. That maybe if it's a million, they won't say, oh, we're going to split that.
I think if we present it as, we need a million, we would like one point two, so we don't have to go into our revolving funds. Nobody's going to go for the one point two. Right? Then you'd be like, go on your revolving funds, right?
Well, no, I don't, I think it's about educating people about like what that means long term. Like federal funding is like a, a real issue. You know, obviously if we have, if we need to, we may have to come back to town meeting. We may have to come back to town meeting in, you know, a couple of years if more likely. If it. So I think that's the piece that I would be worried about is. You know, committing. Two hundred thousand across the board for the next, you know, whatever years that I don't think is, I don't know, maybe not be sustainable at some point.
I guess. In higher ed, we can't go into things with fear of what this administration is going to do because it whiplashes constantly. And we have learned in higher ed. That at eight AM, it can be one thing and at four by the afternoon, it is something else. And we cannot live in a state of fear. Of what is going to happen. And I think if we live in the state of fear of what could happen with. Title one funding and IDA funding, then. We can't move.
It's like. Yeah, and I think like when you have those conversations about that and you get to that fear place, you start thinking, what if I lose my job? What if I lose my health insurance? You know, gas prices get insane and then you're like, I don't want to spend any money on anything.
Like, we really want to show people that Title One, we get over three hundred thousand dollars from Title One and. You know, if that goes away. Then what does that mean? And here's what we get from IDA and what does that mean? I I think people are. I think we're going to save them. I think we're going to do more harm than good.
But I don't think anybody's actually going to need that.
No, and I don't think they're going to care at this moment. That's not what they're caring.
We're going to have a we're going to have a public hearing with the select board. Um. In April. So this is where that education piece before.
And maybe part of with the select board, we have that conversation saying there is so much federal uncertainty at the moment. That we don't know what things are going to look like a year from now. And there's that possibility that. We might have to come back because the feds have done whatever they've done. Um, and the state can't backfill for all of the towns in Massachusetts.
So just for context, for numbers, one point um. Two mil- million dollars is for the average family is two hundred eighty two dollars. Um, so it's under that three hundred like that whatever that we were, you know, it's. Drastically down. Um, one, one million is um. Is two hundred and thirty three approximately. So. Um, I just want to put in context there, you know. I mean, I would be in support of of we had only one number to go in. We would should go in with the number that we think is more sustainable long term. And I would say it would be. One point two. I think.
Yeah, one.
Huh?
One point one, we split.
Yeah, one point. Well, okay, so we do want to say that one point one? Okay.
What does it have to be for the year? You have the little.
That that's that's the year. It's an annual um average family two hundred.
Site up to put one point one in to see what it would look like.
Yeah, yeah, it's it'll be um. I have the website up right now for DLS.
Um, thirty four is twenty bucks a month.
Yeah, so.
For people. You got it. Tell it as it's twenty dollars a month.
Yeah, I hate that.
Yeah, it's two fifty seven, two sixty, two sixty a year. No, it's a year.
Two sixty, I think we have to do a million. Get under two fifty, two million.
All right, so I just need a number, guys, like we, you know, we're talking about twenty dollars. Can we just say one point one and and just? Go with that? I need to send something to the select board or do we want to just do the two or two things?
One million, it's it's under twenty dollars a month. It's under two fifty. It's under two fifty like for the year. Yeah.
Wait, what was the number?
Million, what we're originally talking, yeah.
Well, I think the million was like if we had tiered. Then we would have the second. If we're having, I don't even know the select board might, they might require a tiered. Okay, so we have to present like what number we would want for one. And then if they want a tiered, because they're going to decide that. We're not.
Just do a one. We just got a committee. We just do the one. Period. They're not going to say no.
Yes, they can. Yes.
Say this is a compromise. This is us going down, you know, they they offered five hundred as the lower vote. We wanted one point four. We're going to one million, which is meeting halfway with their lower value. It's a pretty good compromise and it keeps things simple. It gets rid of the comp. Complications and stuff at town meeting.
So what I need from this, the school committee to tell me is if there is one number, what that should be. If there's two numbers, what that should be. That's what I need from you all. Because we don't, we don't decide how the select board is going to put it on there. That's for them to decide. Okay, they're the ones who they do the ballot. We can, we can, they've allowed, they're allowing us to give them the recommendation and I'm very appreciative. But it doesn't mean that they actually have to take what we're recommending. So what I need from you all to say is yes, we strongly recommend one number. This is what it is. However. If the select board must break it out. This is what the school committee. Would recommend in those two tiers.
Then one million to one point four. We keep our original and we offer a compromise to the one million.
Wait, wait, um. So we would say one point four as the one number?
And keep our original request and our compromised option would be one million.
Well, original request had the career position as where we'd take that out. So it would not be. That number because we've already. That's not going to be the number. So it would have to. That's why I was saying one point two is if it's one number. And then if it breaks it out, I don't know, that. I don't know what we want to do, but that's that's why trying to get those figures from you all. So I'm going to make a motion at this point. I will make a motion that we recommend. One number. One point two. And then if it's two tiers, we would say one million. And then one point two.
I'm still saying one million, we're going to lose both of them. We have only two options. Yeah, we're just going to.
We don't decide that, though. We don't just like I agree. I would rather just going in one, but we don't decide that.
Decide that we have a school. We it's our decision as.
It's not our warrant. It's not going to be our. We don't make the override, Mary. That's what I'm trying to tell you. We don't do the, if it was a regular budget we were sponsoring, it's not. They're sponsored. They do the ballot.
Tell us that that won't work then. Let them come back. They would have. Down. They weren't talking about the two tiers. They were over high and we're telling them that we're trying to be. Sensitive to our voters to try and get the number as palatable as we can by staying under that two fifty. And let them have the argument that they want to go. They want to give us a higher, higher.
And I think if they watch this recording and they see that four of us are saying we're in a favor of one million, they're never going to go for one point two million. If there's any need to.
What what they can say is, okay, we want one million and they're seven fifty. Because they still may want two tiers. That's what I don't want to happen.
Well, then what have then how is the one million and then the one point two going to happen?
Because we could say, we could, if they go with a two tiered approach. We could say we would recommend it be one point two. Or one million and then one point two. But what we what I don't want to happen is that we say one number and they say, no, we would like to tier it for the public. And we're going to go with, you know, because we didn't give them a tiered number, we're going to, we're going to say one million is your highest and then seven fifty or whatever is your lowest.
Maybe we need to talk to them and explain the reasoning behind our one million vote. And why we didn't want two tiers and have a conversation to try to like. Compromise and come to that bill agreement.
Yes, I they know that we do not want two tiers. We've talked about that in the subcommittee already, but. That's not they, we and we told them that, hey, like if you're going to have two tiers, that's what I, that's why I'm coming to you all. Like if you're going to have two tiers, please let the school committee be the ones to recommend what those two tiers are. And that's why I'm coming here. Otherwise, you have some people in the select board are just saying fifty fifty. And I don't think that is what the decision should be resting with them. It should be the school committee who is recommending if you're going to have two tiers, what those two tiers are. And so I've tried to pull the conversation back to at least allow us the input of what those two tiers would be if they decide that. So that's what I'm asking you all. To please. Provide me with numbers for two tiers. If they decide that.
Okay, so then if we're doing that, then we say. We recommend. That we would like one tier at one million, but if you're asking for two, then we're doing one million and one point two.
Great. Yeah, thank you.
It's just. Yes. Was that your same takeaway from that meeting? Yeah. Were you at the budget meeting where they insisted on two tiers?
No, no, that was subcommittee.
Okay, yes.
This luck board had they had at their meeting. They had that they were talking about that approach. And that's where. When I heard somebody say, well, just take this and just cut it in half. That's where I said. Please. If you're going to decide, because I had already told them, we only recommend, we said this in our budget subcommittee, we would like one number. And at the select board meeting, when they're deciding it, because they're going to be the ones deciding what goes on the override and the the questions.
So I I am. So are they potentially? Are there people potentially who want to do the two tiers because they want to see it fail?
I don't know the motivation for the members who want to see a two tiered. I think the members who. I don't even know if there's a lot of members, so it may not end up being that way. That's why I want to present them with what we recommend. Um, in speaking to Jeff in the in the meeting, I think he was open to the one idea because of I did introduce that one million. However, he's just one person. You know, and so I want to just, you know, I'm, I don't want to, I want it to be a collaborative process and I think he does as well. So I think, you know, getting everybody or all of our members on board with that, you know, like if we're going to have a public hearing together. It has to be something we all agree on. I think that's the idea is like we would work for everybody that they they support us. But I also want to understand like what we don't want. Is if they decide a two tier. And we don't provide them a number, then they're going to be the ones who decide that number. And I don't think that is what we want in the outcome. I I don't know. I'm just guessing. That's correct. Do we want to provide the number if they're going to decide a two tier?
She just said that we need more deliberation. Um. So I think. What I suggested is what we should do. As long as, you know, we're we're impressing upon them that we don't want two tiers. We want one.
Yes, that will be part of what we're stating in our recommendation. This is what we want as one number like that is we're going to reinforce that, right? We still want one number. And this is what it is. So we're good with that. Okay, so let me just make sure because I think we need to vote on this. There's been a lot of conversation. Um, I think I started to make a motion and I don't think it had a second. So I'm gonna. I'm going to amend the motion that we. Recommend. The one point one million. For. A strongly, strongly, strongly and bold font, red, underline, all of that. Um. This number be the one number that is offered to town. Is one million dollars for an override. However, if the select board strongly, strongly, strongly feels that it must be two tiered. Then the two tiered would be. One million. Or one point two. Right? So one would be relying on our revolver accounts for approximately two thousand, two hundred thousand annually. And one would not be because we would, you know, we can make the argument why that it's a better option as well. So. Sound that? Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Yes. Maro, is that a second? Okay. Any further discussion on this part? Okay. Uh, roll call. Hillary?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Alexis?
Yeah.
Natasha? Yes. Okay, so I will. Inform the select board about what we've. Agreed on. Um, and. Strongly emphasize all of that, how we want the one. One option, one number. As much as possible. Thank you all. I know this is very hard. I'm sorry. I'm not there also. Um. Um. So. The collaborative public forum is, um, I alluded to that they're looking to schedule some, but we need Colleen's input. So when she gets back, we'll have to. Address this. Um. So they want to have a public forum around April, either April first or April eighth. Um, and they would like, you know, the school committee to participate with that. Um. Mary, um, I think. Um, you know, I love to nominate you as our 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 public face to talk about some of these things. Um, but.
Give me. Not right now.
All right, we'll talk when everyone's a little bit more rested about how we will, you know, approach that. Part and.
April, April. Okay.
April first or April eighth for right now are tentative. Is there any particular? Um. Concerns with any of those dates?
Is is that going to be, um, that's going to be a night thing, right?
Yes, it will be a night thing.
Okay, because the um. The food. Um. Food thing is on the first.
Well, so the Fowler National Wine Society. Is on the first, is on the first.
February at six o'clock. You're right.
Um, and just for everyone's awareness, like, you know, Jeff was saying that and and Greg were thinking that it would be like. A dry run of like town meeting, right? So that it would be, and we could also hold our own. We're Mary and I are still going to go to see the seniors as well. Um, so. All right, so.
Sessions that we were talking about doing.
What? The budget thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to schedule a date. So that's where I need Colleen just to, because we have to like post. But there's some legal requirements at the post in a certain period, like in the newspaper and all this stuff. Um.
Like going out and doing forums and having a table here and having a table there and. You know, talking about certain issues. Or people asking questions about certain issues. Are we still? Able to do that? And maybe we talked about that.
We have to talk about that.
Yeah, yeah. So we we're going to have. We need to pick our, I I mean, um, our public hearing would happen on on one of our. On one of our meeting dates so that in April generally, um, but what do we have? I know we have April vacation in there, so. Huh?
Right now, I said Wednesday, the sixteenth right now with the school committee.
Oh, that's, I was looking on Thursdays. It's like, what happened to the seventeenth? But I forgot. There we go. Um.
That's true.
Um, so maybe it's this, um. Maybe April sixteenth. Um. Would be the public hearing. Um, if not, I think that probably would be best. Because it'll be right in between like the public forum would have happened and then. Um, the warrant will have been decided and then it'll be before town meeting. So. Does that sound like April sixteenth for our public hearing? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and then we can think a little bit more maybe. About like how we want to structure that as well. Like. I hear your concerns, you know, Mary, I mean, um, Hillary as well, not like trying to mask anything in any sense. Um. Just want to make sure we're not overwhelming people about the the doom and gloom. Preemptively. So it's just a balance of information. Of, you know, what's realistic, um, and then also making sure that we're still. Doing our best. To show that we're advocating. Um, as well in every way that we're just not settling. For what the town is. Um, so just finding the right balance there, I think.
In my opinion, fifty fifty in terms of the information and we need to lay out. Exactly what the allocation would be under all circumstances.
We can, we um, well, maybe we'll, Mary, we'll maybe send feedback. And then we can talk in a budget subcommittee about. A little bit more because that's where we kind of started by talking about like Brian and Wayne to get that together. So. If um. Anyone has any strong, you know, feelings about what they would like to be incorporated in the budget hearing. Um. Just send them over and then we'll. We'll discuss it in the subcommittee and seeing how we can. Format that and plan for that. Does that sound okay, Mary? All right. Um. I don't have anything else from the chair's board. Um. Super as subcommittee. Super, uh, subcommittee staff? Mauro?
Both policy and personnel got canceled this week, so, um.
All right.
We need to, policy needs to be, um, rescheduled. Um, I think personnel we're doing next week. We did a site visit this past week, which was really fantastic. And then, um, afterwards, we went to, um, Hillary and I went to the staff meeting at Green Meadow, um, which is also fantastic. Um, we got some.
Thank you very much.
Questions, which I sent to everybody. And I just wanna remind people that we should do a Fowler and High School site visit. Um, I would look at the, um, dates of when their, um, I think that theirs is also similar of timing for, um, their staff meetings, so maybe we can do it.
Because they'll do, um, maybe we could do a site visit before the staff meeting for those.
It was kinda funny because, um, the principal down here in Green Meadow didn't realize that we were coming for a site visit. She was, she was very accommodating, and she's like, I'm just, you see, if the staff, no way we're here for a site visit. So we're there, our, we, we said we wanted to say, because she was like, just, just like that. Anyway, she did, so, yeah.
Hillary, any updates?
No.
Hey, Mary?
Um, we had wellness committee, that's why I'm here right now. It's, this morning, we had the wellness committee meeting, but it was, um, it was really a very good meeting, just talking about, so there's going to be, um, the youth risk, um, survey that, um, was just done. There's gonna be another video that's gonna be done and that with different participants. And so, um, uh, Charles is working, working on that. Yeah, that's it.
Hey. Alexis?
Nope.
Okay.
I've slept up tonight.
Hmm, I'm sorry.
No, I'm good.
You're good?
I said a lot already tonight. I'm good.
Okay. No, sorry, I, I missed anything. Um, all right, I know, I don't think we have the, the warrants. There's, um, minutes in the folder. Um, Mauro, I went through, I know that you had some grammatical stuff. And I just went and accepted them, um, for them, and I had a couple of same things, so. I don't know if anyone has any, um, we're strong feelings about not accepting them tonight, and we're, we're pretty behind, so I'd really like to, to chip away at it if we, um, if we can. So the only one that I had, and I think maybe I would wanna leave out, is, uh, there was one about, like, I think it was like electricity or something. And, um, Colleen had put like hybrid, and I can't remember honestly, so I think it was like remote only. She puts it in the next line that it was remote only. Or it was remote. So I think it's supposed to be remote, but that would be the one that I.
Oh, I do remember that.
Yeah, it was remote only, right?
Just look again.
Because she put in here like it was the superintendent conference room as a hybrid via Zoom. But then the next line, it was for the minutes for August 15th. And then she, then the next line, she said that we had to move fully remote due to the power outage. So that's why I was like, I think it was fully remote. But anyway, so I'm gonna just not deal, not do the August 15th one, just to, to we get confirmation on, on that, and I didn't have a chance to look back. Does anybody else have any other thoughts? Is it okay if I just go ahead and for the, make a motion that we approve August 22nd, 2024, September 5th, 2024, September 19th, 2024, and January 23rd, 2025? With edits.
Second.
All right, um, all in favor, um, Alexis?
Yes.
Uh, Mauro?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Mary?
Yep.
Natasha, yes. And then, all right, so we are going to, um, we'll leave the August 15th, so the motion carries. Um, August 15th, we'll revisit those once we get Colleen's confirmation on that. And then I will, um, make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor, Alexis?
Yep.
Mary?
Yes.
Mauro?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
And Natasha, yes. All right, we are adjourned. Brian? Thank you. You can stop the recording, I think, also.
Thank you all for staying.